Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Goines?
For the last time, present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn, here. Commissioner Flingis is excused. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Here.
Thank you.
Gus gets so emotional at these events.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can run a smooth meeting tonight, and we thank you in advance for that. Moving on to Item 4, this is the public comment portion of the agenda. During this portion of the agenda, we have to limit this matter's to those items for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Good evening, sir.
I am the newly-appointed Planning Commissioner. I'm taking over the very, very able seats of Commissioner Goines, my longtime friend. And I have to take a moment to recognize his family here, Mayor Pro Tem of North Las Vegas, Mayor Goines and his family. And I've known Commissioner Goines all my life, and it is going to be an honor, and very, very tall shoes to fill, to fill his shoes. He is a true public servant, as you guys know, and he has done a tremendous job, not only at the Planning Commission, but how he carries himself publicly and privately. And I want to say that I'm here to work with you. I'm looking forward to working with the citizens of Las Vegas, as well as the citizens of Ward 5, and some of them who are here this evening. So, welcome. My neighbors, longtime fan of Commissioner Quinn as well, she is outstanding. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, good evening, and we look forward to having you with us next meeting. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening.
Steve Evans, 1705 Cochran Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. Is this the appropriate time, Chairman Moody?
You know, this is the appropriate time, Commissioner Evans, and we're glad to have you here, and we're just going to roll right into this portion of the agenda. And let me just do this, since we're going to be recognizing some of our commissioners. First, we want to recognize and welcome Commissioner Trowbridge back to our commission. He's served us for the last six months up in Carson City. We're glad to have him back, and he is newly appointed back to the commission. So, welcome, Commissioner, we're glad to have you.
Yes, and I would concur. Thank you.
Now, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we're -- this is the appropriate time during this portion of the agenda to recognize some special service. One of our commissioners, who can't be here tonight, is sick, but we hope he's watching from home, and we want to recognize Commissioner Dick Bonar for his service. It wasn't as long as we would have liked for him to serve with us, but maybe the director can show the plaque that we've had made for Commissioner Bonar. We hope everyone can see that. How about a round of applause? Commissioner Bonar, our very best to you. Now, we have two commissioners who will be leaving us. This is their last meeting, and this is some extraordinary service that we've seen from them. Commissioner Byron Goines was appointed back in February of 2000. Was it before that?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Was that a reappointment?
I know you practice law, and this is my last meeting, so I'm going to go out my way. And let me, Madam Clerk, I want you to make sure you set the record straight. I began my public service in 2002, and so combined eight years of border zoning adjustment with 15 of planning, and my night-school math comes out to about 23 years, if I'm correct. So, it's been 23 lovely years.
Amazing. Commissioner Goines, thank you. This will also be Commissioner Trusdale's last meeting with us. Commissioner Trusdale, if we've got this right, was appointed in January of 2000. Am I correct there? So, between the two of them, 23, 15, almost 40 years of service to the city of Las Vegas. And that, ladies and gentlemen, deserves a round of applause. Now, on behalf of the citizens of Las Vegas and this Planning Commission, we have plaques to commemorate your service. It cannot do justice to everything that you've done, the sacrifices that you've made. This is true civic service. You don't make a lot of money on sitting on this commission. You spend a lot of time. You do some things that are not always comfortable, and you have to make tough decisions, but these gentlemen have done that. They have been leaders here. I respect both of them, and they can leave knowing that they have served us well. And we have plaques to present to both of them. So, Commissioner Goines, if you'll come up, so we can present this to you and maybe get a photo with everyone. And immediately following, Commissioner Goines will invite Commissioner Trusdale to receive his plaque. And then we'll have some comments from friends and family that have joined us for this special occasion tonight.
Thank you.
And following your remarks, we'd ask both Commissioner Goines and Commissioner Trusdale to say anything if they'd be inclined.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I had some words I wanted to say, but, you know, I always have kept in the forefront of my mission up here, and the mission is for the people's business. And so, I don't want to belabor that, and I'd like to have my comments at the end of the meeting, so I can do the people's business first, because that's my priority, and it's been for 23 years.
We can certainly do that, and we'll do the same with Commissioner Trusdale. Welcome.
Thank you. Let me just continue. It's, once again, for the record, Steve Evans, 1705 Cochran Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. Chairperson Moody, you know, as well as the rest of the members of this body, that I had the unique opportunity to sit next to both Commissioners Trusdale and Commissioner Goines for 10 years, at one point, sitting next to either one or the other. And it gave me a unique opportunity and an advantage point. I think what a lot of the public does not understand is the extraordinary amount of time and passion that goes into filling these shoes. I have seen a number of people come and go over the years, predominantly been very pleased, but I can say that combined service of Commissioner Goines and Commissioner Trusdale, you can't measure that. It's extraordinary in terms of time. It's extraordinary in terms of their passion, and I think both do it and have done it and have done it well, with love, love for their community. So, I take my hat off to you, gentlemen, and wish you very well, and thank you, and thank you for such an extraordinary and long period of service, exceptionally stellar given the time that you served. You weathered the bumps, and you were here for the heights. So, my hat's off to both you, gentlemen, and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I call him my brother from another mother. Thank you, Commissioner Evans.
Chairman Moody and the committee, my name is Gene Collins, and I live at 1411 Virginia City Avenue, and I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with both of these commissioners. And also, the new one that is coming in happened to be a neighbor of mine, and so I've known him and his family for quite a while, and, well, these two fine individuals who have served this community very well, I've worked with them. They haven't always agreed with what I had to say, but they've always listened to what I had to say. And for that, I'm so grateful and thankful for both of them and the outgoing Commissioner Mr. Goines. I've had the pleasure of knowing his family for a while, and we haven't always agreed, but we've always listened, and we've always talked. And I just want to take this time and say that thank you for the fine service that you had rendered to our community. And I know the task is not easy, but the work that you guys have done is so appreciated by me. And I just want to stand here and say how thankful and grateful that I've had the opportunity to not only know both of you, but to work with you. And for God's sake, thank both of you for the fine job that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I've known Gene, or I shouldn't say I've known, I should say he's known me, since I was -- you got one of those old country terms, Gene, knee-high-to-a-grass-hopper? That's how long he's been knowing me. So, I just want to thank you for being part of the village that helped raise me to be who I am. So, thank you.
Now, right behind these reserved seats, some of you raised your hands during the -- when I asked if there was going to be any public comment. Are you here to speak on a specific item tonight, or do you wish to make general comment?
Okay, very good.
Then we'll ask you to approach the podium as we get to those items later on. We'll get to them. Okay, so is there anyone else who wishes to make any comment at this time?
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I just wanted to kind of put in perspective the kind of public service from these two gentlemen. We're talking about a time when the city added over 340,000 people to its population, and Commissioner Goines was part of all of that growth and development to help create the great city we have today. And Commissioner Trusdale was here for the addition of about 200,000 people at a time of great growth, and the work that they did is really phenomenal to build this great city. And we're talking about, I did sort of back-of-the-envelope, about 7,000 hours of public service from Mr. Goines and about 3,000 from Mr. Trusdale. That's truly phenomenal amount of service to this community. Thank you.
It's amazing. Okay, we are moving on now to Item 5. This is for possible action to obey the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of July 14, 2015. Is there a motion to obey those minutes?
A move to obey the minutes.
Okay, the motion is to obey the minutes of our last Planning Commission meeting. Please vote. Okay, that motion carries, and the minutes are obeyed until our next Planning Commission meeting, which will be July 14. Moving on to Item 6. Any items from the Planning Commission, staff and/or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the July 14, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 7, TMP 58507. Item number 11, ZON 58533. Item number 41, SUP 59027. The following items have been requested to be tabled, Items #20 through 21, GPA 58199 and ZON 58200. The following item has been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice, Item #44, SUP 59055. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on these housekeeping items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to hold Items 7, 11, and 41 in abeyance to the July 14 Planning Commission hearing. Table Items 20 and 21, and withdrawal without prejudice, Item #44.
Okay, it appears that we have some members of the public who wish to speak on one or more of these items. Okay, so, please state your name and address.
My name is Mark Christensen, 6817 Unicorn Street. On Item #11, I request that the commission hears that this evening. We have individuals that are here from our neighborhood. We had a meeting at the behest of Commissioner Quinn that the developer hold with the neighbors in the neighborhood. I also had a conversation with my councilmember, Steve Ross, Mayor Pro Tem, on this, and to postpone it or push it down the road. We're all here this evening. We'd like for the commission to hear our objections to this, please.
Okay, I appreciate that. Does anyone else wish to be heard, or is that also the reason that you're here? All of you?
Entire row.
Okay. All right, so... So, let's hear from the applicant. Name and address, please.
Yeah, if I may, I'm representative of the applicant.
My name is Levi Parker, address 3425 Cliff Shadows Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129.
Okay, so, I'm just asking you to tell us, and the members of the public that are here, if you could tell us what the purpose is for your abeyance request.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Ross actually requested that this be obeyed for 30 days. I talked to his office. We have a meeting set up next week. We had our meeting last Tuesday, a week ago, and so there's some issues we're still trying to address. Mayor Pro Tem actually requested that we have this in abeyance until July 14, so that there was some sufficient time to have meetings with him, as well as continue to address the concerns with the neighbors.
Okay, very good. So, here's what I propose, is if you'll sit back down, we're going to pull this item forward. It'll be the first item we discuss, following the items on the one motion, one vote, and we can address the abeyance. So, thank you, and hold tight, and if we can have an amended motion...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to hold Items 7 and 41 in abeyance till the July 14, 2015 Planning Commission hearing. Table Items 20 and 21, and withdrawal without prejudice, Item #44. Thank you.
Okay, motion is made.
Just one second. I have something to talk about, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
My name is Carl Armstrong. I live at 1931 Fair Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. We have members of our community here to discuss Items 20 and 21, who is on a tabled agenda at this particular point. We don't know why it was tabled, but we're here to discuss that matter that has been -- it was obeyed from the last meeting in May to this meeting, actually, April, to this meeting, and we would like to discuss it, because we have objections about turning residential estates and a commercial zone into an industrial zone in the middle of a residential area. We have a concern about that.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here on Items 20 and 21?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, could you just approach the podium and give us your reasoning for requesting the table?
My name's Dave Miller. I'm owner's rep for DFA. At this time, we have not sequential the areas that we want to develop and how we're going forward in this motion, so we're just kind of hanging back and trying to figure out how we're going to map everything.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we -- sir, if you'd like to speak, I need you to approach the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, it's John Ray, it's R-A-Y. I'm resident 1100 Comstock Drive, Las Vegas, 89106. And I've been aware of this proposal from, I don't know what, February or May, or March, rather, we were noticed on it. And I've been here probably two, maybe three times in this council meeting, and every time, the thing's been postponed, okay? It's very disingenuous, I think that's the word, from the applicant, not to even talk to the residents in Bonanza Village. We haven't heard a word from them, nothing. All we've done is we've heard that there's had a Planning Commission meeting, and every time we come, all my neighbors are here, we get kicked out, you know, postpone, postpone. We're here tonight to voice our disapproval of the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Would you like amended motion?
Please.
Okay. Let me do this. What do we ask, if there's any more items that we may want to hear before we...
Yeah, so, what we have left is Item 11, 41, and 44 that motions will be made on.
That's 7, 41, and 44.
I'm sorry.
11, 20, and 21 would be pulled.
That's right. Okay. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of those items? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a second amended motion.
Okay, for the second amended... Mr. Chairman, before you do that motion, I want, on Items 20 and 21, I want to do the same, the same thing you did with the previous items, because I want these neighbors to at least get their comments on the record tonight, even if it's going to be held, so that in event that they can't come back next meeting, that they are on the record, so...
Thank you, Commissioner. So, this amended, this second amended motion will not include Items 20 and 21, like Item 11, those will be pulled forward.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on Item 7 and 41, I'm going to make a motion to hold Item 7 and 41 in abeyance until the July 14, 2015 Planning Commission hearing, and we're going to withdraw without prejudice, Item #44.
Okay. Motion is made, please vote. All right, that motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be acted upon by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Are there any that wish to speak on any of the consent items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on the consent agenda items, I would move to approve.
Okay, motion is made to approve consent items 8, 9, and 10. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Items 8, 9, and 10 are final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, we are now moving on to the one-motion, one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be open at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Now, we'll start with Item 11, which has been held. So, moving on to Items 12 and 13, which are related. VAR 59054, the applicant owner is He Sam and John Dudek. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side and rear yard setback where 10 feet is required for a proposed accessory structure, Class 1 casita, at 8485 Lake Tahoe View Court in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item, SUP 59052, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 918-square-foot accessory structure, Class 1 casita, use in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 14, WVR 59161, the applicant is Verizon Wireless and the owner is Doc Gorm LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscaping buffer along a portion of the southern property line where 6 feet is the minimum required at 5741 Skypoint Drive in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item, SUP 58661, for possible action on a request for a special use permit to install a new 86-foot-tall wireless communication facility, stealth-designed monopalm, in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, SUP 58904, the applicant is Brys Guys, Inc. The owner is Decatur 215 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 3,039-square-foot restaurant with 503 square feet of outdoor seating area at 6211 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite Number 120 in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 17, SUP 59041, the applicant owner is Grind Mode 1 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a truck rental use at 2901 North Rancho Drive in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 18, VAC 58900, the applicant owner is Karen Livingston at Al. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 20-foot-wide public drainage amusement generally located at the northwest corner of Coke Street and Maggie Avenue in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. And finally, Item #19, VAC 59025, the applicant owner is Las Vegas Residential Properties, LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 20-foot-wide public alley right-of-way located between Silver Dollar Avenue and Penwood Avenue, east of Valley View Boulevard and west of Wing Street in Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian, staff recommends approval. Okay, any members of the public wish to be heard on any of those items?
Again, for the record, Mark Christensen, 6817 Unicorn Street. On Item #11, we held an open meeting with the owners at which point...
Sir, sorry, we have not called that item. We've pulled it forward onto the public comment portion of the agenda, so that's not part of the one motion, one vote that we're considering right now.
Are we going to be able to have an opportunity to speak on this?
It'll be very next. I promise.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no public comment, I'll close that. Any discussion amongst the commission, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the one-motion, one-vote items, Items #12 through 19, I would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Okay, thank you. Motion is made, please vote. Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18 are final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Items 17 and 19 will go to the city council meeting on April, I'm sorry, July 15th, 2015.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now at the public comment portion of the agenda. We are going to begin with item number 11, which was pulled forward. This is abeyance, ZON 58533. The applicant is Precedent Properties LLC, and the owner is Mark Everett Thrower. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R1 Single Family Residential at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Tom Boulevard in Ward 6. Can we hear from staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, the underlying general plan designation of the subject site is ML Medium Low Density Residential, which allows up to a maximum density of 8.49 dwelling units per acre. The proposed R1 Single Family Residential zoning district requires, wood allows, sorry, district requires a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet. Based upon the site being composed of 2.03 acres, coupled with the minimum lot size requirements of the proposed zoning district, the maximum number of units possible would be approximately 13. That number would be lessened as a result of the required street allocation, landscape buffer requirements, reducing the total acreage available for development. Furthermore, the subject site is located within 330-foot buffer area that surrounds properties that are part of a rural preservation neighborhood overlay, which limits the density of the subject property to that of the properties within the district. However, if good cause is shown by the applicant, the city council may approve an increased density. At this time, no tentative map has been brought forward, and therefore, the ultimate proposed density of the site is unknown at this time. As the proposed zoning district is compatible with the general plan, and the allowable uses within the zoning district are compatible to surrounding land uses and zoning districts, staff is in support of the application and recommends approval. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll have you again state your name and address.
Sure, yeah. Levi Parker, representing the applicant, 3425 Cliff Shadows Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129.
Okay, thank you. I know this item has been requested to be obeyed. We have several neighborhood members here to speak against the abeyance. Sir, again, if you'll state your name and address.
Again, Mark Christensen, 6817 Unicorn Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. Our reason for wanting to be heard this evening, sir, is the simple fact that the footprint of this property is inconsistent with the density of doors that they're going to put on it with the entire neighborhood. There is precedent set for this when D.R. Horton built the Culissac subdivision. The residents of the neighborhood, because it was RE1, or correction, RE Residential Estates, had to set back the stone wall and offset six of their buildings associated with the build-out for that residential area. And right now, we're looking at the density of approximately, or up to 13 homes on two acres, right next to properties which are at a minimum three-quarters of an acre, or a third of an acre, and in some cases, two-plus acres. It just does not fit into the footprint, and we have expressed our concerns with the applicant, based on a meeting that was recommended by Commissioner Quinn, that he sits down with the people in the area. I will note for the record that we have approximately 15 to 20 of us here. We have approximately 40-some-odd votes that are against this to include the adjacent properties and subdivisions next to this. Additionally, I've spoken with Mayor Pro Tem on this, and we're vehemently opposed to this. The situation associated with an additional property that the applicant owns at the other end of our block, we opposed also, and the applicant put in for a meeting which was not put out to all of us, and subsequently, that was rezoned to RE1. And now we're being faced with two opposing sites that have the potential to completely destroy the ambiance and the sanctuary that we call our neighborhood. Would anybody else like to speak?
Thank you. Seeing the number of neighbors that we have, we're going to put a three-minute time limit on each of you, and I would ask your indulgence to try not to repeat anything that's being said, that's been said already. If you have something new, please come up and state your name and address. And we do have more than one microphone. We'd like you to line up so that we can, we can get through this.
My name is Michael Adams. Address is 6875 Unicorn Street, Las Vegas, 89131. First, I would like to thank Commissioner Quinn for the recommendation of having a meeting, because I was here last month with one of our neighbors who was unable to attend because they had to go out of town. Couple of things that I'd like to state for the record, and that's the main reason why most of us are here, is we want to make sure that we are on the record of being vehemently opposed to this. The meeting that was held the other night at the YMCA had its moments of being quite passionate, because that's how this neighborhood is feeling about it. It has also overflowed into neighbors that are outside of our direct framework of the half-acre to two acres, and most of them, I happen to be the one in the neighborhood that has gone knocked on the doors, contacted each one of the neighbors. So the ones that were not able to join us tonight, nine times out of 10, it was because of work scheduling. So if it was not for work scheduling and this meeting starting at 6:00, you would probably have over 40 people lined up to be able to go on the record for this. Basically, that's where I was going with it. My only other statement would be that we are ready to fight this as far as we need to, so if there's a postponement, like what was stated by the other gentleman earlier on the other item, if this is postponed and abated for the next six months, there will be bunches of us at each meeting, because that's how totally vehemently opposed to this we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Fair. I reside at 6800 Unicorn Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I agree completely with the two gentlemen before me have said. I would like you to consider the rural preservation that was mentioned, and that is why a lot of us are here, is to preserve the rural environment that we, that attracted us to the area in the first place. I'll keep this short. Respect your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brian Fortner. I live at 5150 Deer Springs. The triangle right next to the left of it, which would be just west of it, is actually my property. It borders the whole entire side of that two acres there, so it directly affects me. I moved out here eight years ago. I made a commitment to protect the city. I want to spend my whole career out here. And one of the reasons I chose this area is because I work this area, and I love the horses, the nature, the space, the size of the property. It gives me room to grow. It's my forever home. And one of the justifications at our meeting that the developer was trying to sell us, if you would, is that there's R1 all around us. Well, it's not part of our community, though. If you were to stand on my street or one of the other neighbor's streets, it's not part of our community. They're set all the way across Deer Springs, four lanes, walls up, facing the opposite direction. They're not part of us. We are not R1 there. That whole acre, I mean, I want them to develop it. I want it to be developed. I want houses to be built. I want the three or four homes that would be allowed. I don't want eight, 13, whatever the limitations would be. I understand all the logistics of it. I want four neighbors, three neighbors. That's great. I don't want eight. I don't want 10. It's not fair to those people that would move in those homes either, because they're not going to be moving into a community that they understand, where we all have animals and horses and peacocks. We all love that. Nobody complains. It's a quiet area. The crime is low. I know all that for a fact. We're all opposed to it. That's why I'm here. That's why everybody else is here. The meeting that we had with the neighborhood, everybody showed up on that. We all knew that wasn't official, but we all still wanted to show up to everything that it required. And you guys care about the city, and you guys put your time into it and your careers. And I want to make the same thing for me. I want to spend a long time here and invest in the city, and this is why I moved here. It would greatly decrease my quality of life and other neighbors. It affects many people. We want it to be developed. We don't want to hold it up. We just don't want it to be developed the way that they might develop it. So we want to keep it down to that estate and keep it where it is. It's not part of our community. It's not the same as the surrounding areas adjacent that at one point were changed. So, we're all opposed to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, Sunine Gerheim, 6911 Unicorn Street. My family's been here since the 20s. The Gerheim families are in the pioneer books. They were into developing this whole city. They wanted to see it grow huge, but they also understood that there's certain areas that make this town special, and we want to keep it special. The big problem we have with the development of that corner, there, for all the other subdivisions in there, there are big streets that divide everything. This subdivision, it goes in as it is. These walls are going to be right up against other property lines, not against another subdivision, right up against people that have peacocks and horses and roosters and chickens and everything else. And I know what will happen. They will all be vehemently opposed to those roosters crowing at 5:00 in the morning. And our horses kicking the stalls because we're a little late to feed that morning, et cetera, et cetera. And the dust that even though we all use sprinklers on our arenas, I own the big two-and-a-half acre piece down at the other end, it's the horse ranch in this area. We do everything we can to keep our neighbors happy, but you come in and you're a city guy, and you've got, you've got a great prize, it's a cute little place, it's out here, it's right in the middle of country, and people don't get it. And it's right up against our property lines. There's no street to divide us. So that's our big complaint. Develop it, reduce the size of houses, reduce the numbers, and make everybody happy that they're not complaining that two years from now, asking us to stop our business. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's Kevin Kelly.
Anyone else, I'm sorry to interrupt. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please come on up. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Kevin Kelly. 6832 Tom Boulevard is my address, which is actually directly, these properties would butt up to my equestrian facility, is really what it is. And I believe that's going to cause a lot of challenges, but beyond that, I believe as a developer, you've got a responsibility to add value to what you're doing when you bring something into a community. If you look over on, about a block and a half away, just recently, there was two new custom properties put in on Mellow Street, at the very end of Bradley, and right by the equestrian trail. Those properties added true value to the neighborhood, and putting in properties that are of less value are, they're not going to do anything for this area except for line the developers' or the landflippers' pocket with equity from the residents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
My name is Carol Smith. I live at 5353 Dorrell Lane. No one's addressed the traffic, and that, to me, is a big concern. My neighborhood already is crazy with the traffic. There's about 10 houses on Dorrell, and I get probably 200 cars past my house every day. Where are they going? Where are they coming to? All this is going to do with all this development is add to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brief reply from the applicant.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I hear their points. We heard these points last week. The reason why there's so much traffic is because this is planned for medium-density housing. I don't know when this was put in place, the land use, but I know it was in place before a lot of these people bought in this area. And I know that's public information to see what's planted. This is not a rural preservation area. There's, in the, in the thousand square feet, there's more R1 zone property than RE. And as another fact, I, from the counterparts, the resistance from the neighborhood, 30, over 30% of the complaints actually are from people that live in R1 zone property. So they're, they're receiving the benefit of the great plan and the R1 zoning. I believe our friend Colonel, the general from Air Force today, he lives in an R1 zone property. And so I guess the confusion for the landowner is that they want to benefit from the R1, from the R1 zoning that's here, that's allowed, and even live in R1 zoning, but they're, for some reason, having a hard time with this particular property.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment now. Sorry, sir, I can't give you a response, because then I need to give him another reply. So I'm going to open this for discussion amongst the planning commissioners, and let me speak first. I know you had a meeting back on June 2nd, and I reviewed the notes from that meeting, and I believe all of the neighbors were in opposition at that meeting. I did contact the Mayor Pro Tem's office and confirmed that in fact, he was the one that requested that the applicant seek an abeyance of the item today. He wanted the opportunity to, to meet with, meet with you, talk about the plans, talk about the neighborhood opposition, strong opposition against this, see if there were some alternatives. This is the second abeyance request. I can tell you, if it comes back next month for a third abeyance, they would have to show cause in order to get that. So because of all of those things, my recommendation would be that we obey this one more time to give the Mayor Pro Tem this opportunity to meet with the applicant, see if we can't work something out. I can't make that motion, so I want to hear from my fellow commissioners to see if they have any other ideas.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I guess the problem here is you look at some of the developments that have happened in the area that are the R1, and on a similar parcel, you've got six homes, but our code says 13. I don't know how you could approve this master plan without a development plan to go with it. You know, you're asking the neighbors to buy into something that you may not even be able to build, but you'll add that density and try to create value, and the dirt will get sold, and somebody will do something else with it, and ultimately, they'll get something in here that probably doesn't fit the neighborhood. So I think whether it's held today or whether it's, it's not, the neighbors have, if you truly want to do what's right for the neighbors, and the neighbors are concerned, realizing that something will happen there, there is going to be development there, the plan should come in with a building layout that fits, because if you put 13 homes on that property, they're going to be, they won't be the size of a mobile home. And I'm sure that's not what you're planning, but I'm definitely sure that's not what the neighborhood wants.
Of course.
So, these are my comments.
Mr. Goins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Truesdale, but in one sense, I wanted to just tell the applicant, sometimes you, you know, some things may be better left unsaid, but when you represent that most of the area is all R1, you're almost telling these folks that, you know, since you were there and you got your slice of heaven, we're going to come in and ruin it by putting something here. If you look at Tom Boulevard, from that parcel going all the way, would that be north? It's all R, it's all RE. And so if you stick a R1 right here and add upwards of 13 homes, you're going to destroy their quality of life. And sometimes you developers have to listen when you go to these neighborhood meetings, when the people really say they don't want it, they really mean they don't want it. And you're representing it like, yeah, they don't want it, but here's what they're going to get. And, and to me, that, that's disingenuous. I wouldn't support it there. I think it's RE. I think, you know, I've been here 51 years in Las, well, 52 years here in Las Vegas, and, and there are some pieces out here that we have to preserve and keep that original intent, like the young lady that said she's, family's been here from the 20s. I mean, we've got Sharon Linsenbarg out there as well with the farm, who's been there from the 30s. And so these people want to keep that rural lifestyle. They don't want streetlight curbs and gutters. They want the, the peacocks, the pot-bellied pigs, and they want it dark out there. And, and, and they should be able to, as much as they've invested in this area, to live a quality of life that they desire. So I, you wouldn't see my support on it.
Commissioner Trowbridge, did you have a comment?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I would like to see an overlay of the rural preservation, realizing, of course- realizing, of course, that the City Council retains the ability to approve greater density or intensity, but it's got to be for good cause. And so in addition to seeing just the rural overlay, I'd like to hear what the applicant has that is the good cause for allowing a higher density than what's normally approved in this area.
Yeah, I think the applicant's good cause was that it was, the land use was planned for medium density for, and I know, I understand the rural life. I appreciate the rural life, and I appreciate horses. I come from a family. We have many horses, and we have rural property in our family. And so I understand that. And we're not trying to change that lifestyle. We're trying to do what was the best use in the planned area for this property. And so the owner intended to have higher density than RE. That was why he particularly owned this property and was in this area. We thought, we didn't realize there was going to be so much resistance because it is somewhat pretty cohesive of the area. There are R1 zones on two of the four sides. And so we didn't anticipate this much resistance. But I know that their plans are to continue to develop the property, finish the vacant land, and maximize what the owner actually thought was allowed for this, based on the land use plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Trowbridge, anything else?
Just as a follow-up question, though, is the rural preservation overlay might have precedence over your developers' intentions and understanding. And, you know, the comments that he just wants to put more units in there, I certainly understand the economics of that. However, would he be willing to compensate the neighbors that's properties are being negatively impacted? I would think not, but I would pray for it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is this helping out the neighborhood rather than just the owner of the parcel?
I believe that when the neighborhood is developed, there's houses versus vacant land. There's more taxes it brings back to the community. They're allowed to get the parks and things that they want in this area. And so the improvement of it, I thought, would bring value to this area, just like versus vacant land, no improvements.
Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Chairman. I think after four, three abeyances and us holding it, I don't know how many more times you need to go back to your owner to tell them that you have huge opposition, huge opposition. I heard you say it over and over and over again. So I'm not quite sure how you can come back and please these people, but I will tell you this, if you come back with this, you will not see my support as well. We're going to hold this item this evening at the request of the councilman so that you can have one more shot at it. But you've got a lot of work to do to get my support on this, because I don't know how much more your owner needs to hear. These people don't want it there, and this is their neighborhood. So my motion through you, Mr. Chairman.
If, I do want to make one comment to the neighbors, and that is, I know a lot of you came tonight. Some of you may not be able to be here if the motion is made for an abeyance, and that's granted. If you can't, please understand that your comments will be incorporated from tonight into the meetings of next month. So you may not be able to be here, but your voices have been heard. And, sorry, I can't have any more public comment. That's closed. So I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to make a motion to hold item number 11, the zoning of 58533, the last, probably the last time to the next planning commission meeting, please.
Okay, the motion is to obey item 11. Please vote. That motion carries, and this item is abayed until the next planning commission meeting of July 14, 2015. Sir, do you have a brief comment?
I have a brief comment.
Okay, certainly. If you'll approach the podium, please.
I understand that comments have been closed. I thank you for indulging just one question. Since this will be postponed until the next meeting on next month, would it be beneficial for you if by that point, for our neighbors who are not able to attend because of work, if I have a petition sheet that I may turn in to you to get you numbers of how many of us are absolutely opposed?
The answer to that is yes. It would absolutely be helpful. The sooner we get that, the better. But even if it comes on the day of the meeting, we can make that a part of the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to related items 20 and 21. Item 20 is an abeyance, GPA 58199. The applicant owner is DFA LLC for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from MXU, Mixed Use, and C Commercial to LIR, Light Industry Research at the northeast corner Bonanza Road and Clarkway Drive in Ward 5. Related item 21, abeyance ZON 58200 for possible action on a request for rezoning from RE residential estates and C2 General Commercial to M Industrial in Ward 5. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this item is not prepared to move forward, therefore there is no staff report and no recommendation on this item at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. So there is no recommendation from staff. Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, we probably need to hear from the applicant first.
I'm sorry?
Probably need to hear from the applicant first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do need to hear from the applicant. Again, your name and address.
My name's Dave Miller. I live at 252 Hole Street, Henderson, Nevada, representing DFA as owner representation for this project.
Okay. You have anything else to say? As you know, we have.
No, I'm just, we're just following the protocol that was set before us and tabling it until we get everything resurrected within our own rights.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Can I get an idea of how many, how many people are here to speak, either for or against this item? Okay, it looks like we have one at the podium, maybe five or six. Again, we're going to limit your remarks to three minutes each. There will be a timer, and I'd ask you to keep your comments to under three minutes, and please try not to repeat anything that's gone on before you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carl Armstrong, and I live at 1931 Fair Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. It's in a subdivision called Bonanza Village. It is basically kitty-corner across from the property that is in question. The property that's in question starts on Clarkway, but it butts Bonanza, and it goes all the way to Washington where there is a wall. This matter, this area was zoned from residential estates to commercial some years ago, about two or three years ago, and there was some rejection to that in terms of what we were talking about. So there were conditions that were placed in terms of high loaders not being placed near the wall and things of that nature. We believe that even though we fought the commercial zoning two years ago, that, that, at that particular point, we didn't really have much to say about whether Mr. Ahearn was allowed to move that into a commercial zoning setting. But now we're moving into something that is even more draconian in terms of what we're talking about. We're moving into a industrial setting. And usually, you do not interpose an industrial setting right on top of or in the middle of a residential neighborhood, whether it's R1, RE, or anything like that. Everything around that area is pretty much residential estates or residential zoning in terms of that area. We're dropping, we're trying to drop an industrial zone right in the middle of a residential area. That's not something I don't think that is done in the city. What happens is you put the industrial zones out of the residential areas. You don't put it right in the middle of a residential area. I understand this was increased property values. I understand all those things in terms of the economics of what we're talking about. But we have to worry about our property values and the things that we have to worry about in our quality of life in terms of putting an industrial use in the middle of our neighborhood, because we don't know what Mr. Ahearn wants to do with the property or what people, ultimately, successors and interests want to do with that property. Because if it's zoned industrial, they can do just about anything with that property, and there are a ton of permitted uses that are incompatible with the residential area. We don't want it. There are 40 of us, at least, not just here, but have filed protests on this matter. There's only been two people that have said that they want this in the middle of our neighborhood. We can get more in terms of what we're talking about, but we do not want industrial in the middle of our residential area. It has not been done anywhere else in the city. And the precedent that you set is just incredible in terms of what we're talking about. If you can do it to us in Ward 5, then you can do it in Ward 6, 1, 2, 3, or 4, because it's never been done in the city. And I don't understand why it would even be considered in this situation. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I appreciate your comments. Before we hear from Mr. Collins, based on the comments from the previous gentleman, I realize that I have a conflict. My law firm has a contractual relationship with the applicant owner, which I just realized. So I'm going to abstain and turn the rest of the discussion over to the vice chair.
Okay. And I have a disclosure. I rent equipment from Ahearn, but I have also purchased groceries from Walmart, and I vote on those. So it's not going to affect me any greater or lesser than.
Chairman, as long as you don't have any open accounts, that you owe the money or anything like that, you think you're okay to vote?
Well, we always have open accounts with 300 people across town, so.
Okay. I think we probably need to.
Okay.
Have him stand last again as well.
Go ahead and abstain on this matter as well.
You want to do this as a duo, Commissioner Truesdale? Are we on our way out? We could, we could roll out. You know, we love this part of town.
It's my favorite area of town.
Why don't you go ahead and take it, Commissioner Truesdale? It's my ward, and I'll reserve my comments, so I'll let you go ahead and.
Let me get up to speed here. So it's very hard to discuss a lot of this because there's so much that would be part of this, and without all the documentation, the reports that we would expect from staff, it's very difficult. But it begs the question that an application was taken in without all of the accompanying documents to make a good argument when it came before this committee, or this commission. But I will let, open this up to the public hearing and let Mr. Collins make his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jean Collins, and I live at 1411 Virginia City Avenue. Mine is going to be very short and not repetitious. It's that I am the president of the Neighborhood Association of Bonanza Village. I am against the rezoning of this property because it is zoned for residential. The lot size in the area starts off at approximately half acre, three-quarters of an acre, even an acre of land, and it is zoned for resident. We have, in the area, we have animals that live. We don't have sidewalks, streetlights, because that's just the way we want it. We think that if you allow the zoning to be changed, then our property value is going to go down. The area is zoned the way that we would like for it to be, and we would like for it to stay that way. What I tried to do, when we moved into the area, I tried to have a open dialogue with Mr. Ahearn. I went by his office, and I told the individual that were there that who I was, and I wanted to set up a meeting so that if we had an opportunity, if an opportunity like this did come up, we wanted to establish a relationship with Mr. Ahearn. So I opened up the doors myself to meet with Mr. Ahearn for future ventures such as this. I got no response from Mr. Ahearn. And now here we are, right here today, in the middle of a fight because I thought maybe a year or two ago that we could enter into a dialogue, that we could sit down and talk about the future of our community. Mr. Ahearn did not respond. And so here we are now, doing the same thing that we tried to event. We have no other choice except to be here and to speak out against this because, as the previous speaker has said, that there are more of us who is against this property than who are here. And we could get your names and everything like this. So we are opposed because, like I said, there are individuals who have horses. There are no sidewalk. There are no streetlights. There are animals live in Bonanza Village, and that's how we want it, and that's how we want to keep it. So I'm going to keep my brief very short, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you and to speak about this issue. And if it comes back a dozen times, we're going to be here with the same opposition to changing the zones of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Thank you. John Ray, and 1100 Comstock Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106. You know, I've been in real estate 25 years, been licensed for 25 years. This situation of an applicant applying for industrial zoning next to a residential is just, I don't know if the word is ludicrous or what. I think the applicant probably realizes how outrageous it is because he's postponed this thing three times now. And he thinks we're going to just go away, and he's going to ride over us. I don't know. But we're not living in Tijuana, Mexico. We're living in Las Vegas, Nevada. And zoning is here for a purpose. It's for a purpose to protect the property owners and the value of the property. And if this thing was to go in, I'm already listening to the microphone of the auction. They have auction real estate, equipment auctions from time to time. I'm already listening to that pollution. Now they're going to have industrial use, or thinking of having industrial use. They're going to run the thing 24 hours a day, trucks coming in and out, the whole thing. It just smells of a real bad idea. And they think, they know it, because they've been postponing this for three times already. So I'm vehemently against it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chandra Armstrong. I live at 1931 Fair Avenue. I think it's also important to know that there is a code enforcement complaint that has been registered against this property for them not being in compliance with the conditions that are existing on the property as of right now. My husband was incorrect when he said two or three years ago. We actually came before the planning commission, probably almost eight or nine years ago, when these properties were all residential estates. And they asked for a commercial zoning on these properties, which we at that time vehemently opposed. And as part of the agreement, there were conditions placed. One of the conditions was that there was no entrance onto the property from Washington. And I think that the pictures that you showed earlier that were submitted by them are a little bit misleading because it makes it appear that their property, when it butts against our neighborhood, is commercial. When in actuality, part of the agreement was that they would put a wall along Washington with 20 feet of fully grown landscaping that mimicked our neighborhood in order to maintain the residential character of the community. Part of those restrictions were that they would not have bright lights after a certain period, that they would have their equipment set back from that wall. And over the years, and again now, even worse than ever before, we are having trash, debris that is abutting against the wall that we can see from Washington. We have, in the past, called several times and spoken with Bruce Billyou and asked them to lower the cranes because their cranes can get very high, and they, they were supposed to keep them down so that we didn't have to see them. My husband and I bought property in Bonanza Village in 1997, and we're blessed enough to build a house, a dream home for our family. We've raised three sons there. We love this neighborhood. I've been active in this community for many years, and this is a situation that we feel is very egregious and disingenuous from the landowners. And we feel that they are trying to flip this, and if they aren't, they are not respecting the character of the neighborhood as it exists. We looked at property all up and down Washington, checked the zoning, and there is not one piece of property from Martin Luther King all the way to Rancho that is industrial. Everything is commercial. And we were opposed to that. And to bring this to our neighborhood, even as a suggestion, I just think it's very, it's just not neighborly, and it's just, it's almost really an insult. So we would appreciate it if you all would consider actually not even holding it again. We would like it to be heard tonight, but if you have to, you have 38 complaints. 38. I don't know how many more you need. 39. You got 39. And I think that's significant and substantial. And I think that's significant and substantial and speaks to the true feeling of the community about any possible rezoning to industrial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Swayzeen Fields. I reside at 1124 Comstock Drive. I just got up to say, because, you know, I moved to Bonanza Village in 2004. I moved in from Los Angeles. I could have bought a house in Green Valley or Summerlin, but I was born and raised in West Las Vegas, and that's where I wanted to be. So my effort was to buy a big property with a lot of land and watch my investment grow. But instead, what I've run across is Don Ahearn purchasing, it's like a plan that he had from the very beginning. He bought out houses in the subject property area and slowly converted it to where he wants to be today. And I think it's disingenuous for the staff to tell us now they don't have anything ready to report on this when this thing has been going since the beginning of the year. And Ahearn knows exactly what he wants to do, and he's scared to present it because he doesn't want to come up against us because Bonanza Village has been fighting Ahearn for a long time. And I think that Ahearn has the ability to be a great community partner. And then, I'm not going to lie to you, in some instances, Mr. Ahearn has offered to do things for Bonanza Village. But on the flip side of it, I think it's wrong to try to put this property in the middle of a residential area when Mr. Ahearn has property all over Las Vegas. Why 89106? Why, when the few people who want to live in 89106 and buy beautiful houses, we have to be subject to this? Would he do this in Green Valley? No. Would he do this in Summerlin? No. He chose our area, and I don't think that it's fair. And I just would like to know that, you know, the commission, and thank you for your service, Commissioner Goines, because you've done a good job for us, and I'm looking forward to having Cedric Krier sit there. But I would like to know that somebody's looking out for our interest in 89106. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. There's not much you can say that's going to sway the moment, but I'll let the commissioners.
I want to say one thing. I'm James Anderson. I live at 1301 Sharon Road. I moved over there 25 years ago and built a house. At that point in time, people's moving out and going to other places like Green Valley, Summerlin, and all those different places. And I moved in, and I seen all the potentials there. And so it was a whole lot of other people that had the same idea that I did, including the Armstrongs here. And it's a place to, it's a special place. It's a place to rest. It's a place to relax. It's a place that a lot of people are not aware that it's there. People that was born and raised here, they come on that side of town to do work or whatever the case might be. They say, I didn't even know this property existed. And they said, this is probably the best secret kept in the state of Nevada. And I built this home over there, and it was just, it's just such a blessed place. The biggest assets over there is the quietness, the peace, the zone for horses and the chickens and whatever the case might be, the large lots. And then centrally located, you can go right to the freeway. You have all this. And that's what we have. But if we come to a point, like Mr. Ahearn, for instance, we dealt with him, we did what we had to do with him. And it came to a point to where we just said, okay, well, you, they've already talked about this, but the whole idea was, we was promised Ace Hardware Store. We didn't get that. We got, we got the devil landscaping, we got a high wall, and that was it, and we had to stay on the watch. And like President Collins said, from that point on, he tried to talk to him, everybody was very elusive. And so, and here we are. Nobody told, half of us didn't even get acknowledgement to the hearing, to the rezoning. Most of us didn't get one because it's such a great area, and they just gave a few, and that was it. But this is pretty much what we all saying, we're saying pretty much the same thing. And we just come to divorce our feeling about the whole thing, and we greatly reject to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Goines, or Commissioner Quinn, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the neighbors have spoken to, you know, this, just a little history in this area. This group of homes up here, as represented by some of the neighbors, were some of those first big lot homes in the city of Las Vegas that I can remember. Even it matches up with, this is kind of like the Bonanza Village of the West Side. And we, and we know, and the neighbors know, Ms. Armstrong knows, that Mr. Ahearn over the years has been, for lack of a better word, stockpiling parcels of land. And you have to know at some time in the future that a plan was going to be unveiled to kind of bring a little shock and awe to the neighborhood. But to me, this is no shock and awe to the neighborhood. In my 23 years of planning and having to go around the country looking at different cities and urban cores, and we know this recipe just about in every black neighborhood and every major metropolitan city in the country. You've got industrial where we sit in Pittsburgh amongst smoke stacks from chemical plants and from Cleveland where we sit right up under mass transit and bus yards, and you look down in some of these other cities, Chicago, Washington DC. A lot of these black neighborhoods are surrounded by industrial uses. Studies have showed over the years that there's been some significant causes to youth growing up, to seniors in the neighborhood and health reasons. And so by not embracing this neighborhood and trying to talk to them, meaning Mr. Ahearn, come out of your tower, the ivory tower, and come down to street level, and let's talk about it. That's all the neighbors are asking for. And to bring this with no recommendation is kind of almost one of those things of, it's kind of like peeping at the goody. We're going to let you see it. We're not going to let you touch it, but when it come back, we're going to let you feel it. And it's almost like you're going to let them feel it, and there's nothing they can do about it. But there's about 39 strong that I saw right here with opposition, and I know these folks here aren't going anywhere, so you're in for a battle, Commissioner Krier. You're in for a battle. Y'all, I'll be sitting on the sidelines, and I can still get in the game. So with that, there is no recommendation, and so, but those are my comments. But I, but I do think that this is a neighborhood that is, as long as it's been there, I think it's starting to see its better days now. And I think the fact that Ms. Armstrong have raised three sons, and I'm pretty sure in the next few years, those sons may be coming back with their family to raise them in that area. So what I'm explaining to you, just because they look a little older, they're not going anywhere. They've taken the model of raising their kids to reseed and plant back into the neighborhood. So, so they're coming, and they're going to be there. So I would just hope you'd convey back to Mr. Ahearn, come out that tower and get down to ground level, and let's develop a neighborhood as a cohesive unit so we can all work together.
I think he would have been a part of that. This was just an abeyance and going through the protocol, but if there was more to it, I'm sure he would have been here and acknowledged these folks today.
Mr. Chairman, if there's any more questions or comments?
I think Commissioner Trubry has some comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. This might be my first meeting, but it's not my first rodeo. I've did almost eight years on this board a couple of years ago, and so I'm familiar with this issue. And I remember back when the Ace Hardware was being considered, one of the primary considerations that was, had a lot of value was simply the fact that Ahearn's was a good neighbor and had one of the largest payrolls and number of people on the West Side that worked for him there. And so I think those contributions to the neighborhood carried some weight. You've currently got, you know, commercial and mixed use. I think that our discussion would be enriched if we're going to continue this and bring it back. If we could have some fairly specific discussions as to why an upgrade to the light industrial and research category, I mean, what in the world does Mr. Ahearn have in his mind? I think that a good explanation of his intent might be persuasive. It would certainly, like I said, enrich the discussion. So just a little more info, please.
Understood.
Thank you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Commissioner Goines for final comment and motion.
Mr. Chairman, without any further comments, and just one more comment. He, well, it's like bamboozle. We know what he wants. We know what he wants on here. He wants some property, puts more booms and stuff up. That's his business. So when we sit here and say, well, we don't know what his intent is, we need to sit and talk with him, we know. He runs Ahearn Rentals, and he rents everything from booms to, and this is his property, and he's bought the property. And he has a right to come in, and he has the right to assemble his property, and he has a right to build and develop it. But you can't be the 400-pound gorilla. You just can't. And so with that, I'm going to move for a recommendation of holding this item, and I don't.
I think the item is to be tabled.
Tabled this item, and that would be my motion.
Okay. There are other comments? Please cast your vote. Thank you, and that is approved with Commissioner Moody and Schlotman abstaining. Thank you very much, and I think you understand what the neighbors want when you come back and.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Have a great evening. Before we go past this, these are two petitions that were given by one of the neighbors that need to go into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Trusdale. We are now on item 20, an abeyance re-notification.
Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, 22. Abeyance re-notification, SUP 57330. The applicant owner is Homeless Helpers for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an alternative parking standard to allow four parking spaces where 18 spaces are required for a proposed general personal service use at 204 Master Lane in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this application was previously related to another special use permit application for a service provider at this site. As the proposed uses of the subject site have changed to general personal services such as drop-in information center with mailbox, computer lab, and temporary storage, so has the associated parking requirements, thereby necessitating the need to re-notice the item. Staff finds the proposed alternate parking demand analysis supports the proposed uses as being unique in their parking requirements and is in support of the application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Before I ask you to state your name and address, I need to disclose that I also have a contractual relationship, not with the applicant owner, but one of the interested parties in this case, which is Catholic Charities of Southern Nevada. And out of, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain and ask the vice chair to take over on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Applicant, can we get your name and record for the address?
Arnold Stock, 840 South Rancho Drive, 89106.
All right, please go ahead.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Schlotman and Planning Commissioners. My name is Arnold Stock, and I do have some prepared brief comments, but I want to speak from my heart first. I've been a resident in Las Vegas for 24 years, and I don't know about this commission or this city or the people in the city, but we're in the trenches every day, and we want to do something to eliminate the homeless problem, not only in the city of Las Vegas, but all of Southern Nevada. I'm here this evening to present our CARE Critical Assistance Relief effort requests for a special use permit located 204 Master Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. The building consists of approximately 4,800 square feet. The site is at the heart of the homeless problem in downtown Las Vegas and in Southern Nevada. If you're not familiar with this area, or people this evening are not familiar with it, there are many homeless people living in the streets, under tunnels, in storm drains, in garages, in their cars, in overcrowded housing conditions, and in abandoned buildings, not only in Las Vegas, but in Southern Nevada, as I said. Many end up on 4 Master Lane. One of the most disproportionate group and expanding of the homeless population is our United States veterans. Those men and women who have served our country, put themselves in harm's way and have served in the armed forces for decades now so that we can all enjoy our freedom that we enjoy here and across the nation. There are efforts to eliminate homelessness on a local, state, and federal level, and I applaud and support them all. This has been a problem for some time in our community, and I am happy to say there are some, there is a concerted and coordinated effort to help alleviate homelessness and the lack of affordable housing on several fronts here in Las Vegas. Homelessness can only be eliminated if we build the four levels of housing: emergency shelter, transitional housing, scattered site rental housing, and homeownership. All of the above with available intensive and supportive services. Without doing this in a comprehensive manner, it will not eliminate homelessness. Together as a community, we can solve this problem, and it will take a comprehensive public and private partnership to accomplish this. The CARE Center is one small component of what I'm prescribing tonight. It is a project and a partnership between Homeless Helpers of Las Vegas and Veterans Village of Downtown Las Vegas, two 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. This is the second project for Veterans Village in Downtown Las Vegas since opening over three years ago, and I can say that we are determined and dedicated so that we never have to say the word "United States veterans" and "homelessness" in the same sentence. The CARE Las Vegas Project will provide the following, not only to veterans, but to the general public: a drop-in information center, mailboxes, temporary storage, a computer lab, accessory library use for when the library closes, and there will be a note, and especially, I wanted to comment, there will be no feeding on site. No meals, no food, no feeding on this site. Collaborations that we have in place include partnerships with West Care Nevada, Help of Southern Nevada, Freedom House Sober Living, State of Nevada Mental Health, Clark County Social Service, U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, HUD of Las Vegas Office, the City of Las Vegas, Las Vegas Metro Police, and Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. These are agencies and organizations that we use on a daily basis to help us help people. We look forward to working with our neighbors, which includes Catholic Charities, St. Vincent Plaza, The Shade Tree, Salvation Army, U.S. Vets, Help USA, the Las Vegas Rescue Mission, and downtown businesses. We purchased the building almost a year ago. It was principally purchased by the Swackers, Michael Swacker, who's in the audience tonight, and his wife, all with private funds. We secured a grant from the Home Depot Foundation to buy the supplies to redo the facility, which was completely rundown. It was, looked like a bombed-out building, which it essentially was. It was an old church that had been overrun by homeless people and people in the streets that were sleeping there and doing all sorts of different type activities. So we got that from the Home Depot Foundation. We had the Crossing Church, which over 300 volunteers last November, redo about 90% of the building. And since then, we've had some help from individual donors, foundation support, local businesses, and larger corporations. Our request for a special use permit for an alternative parking standard to allow for four parking spaces where 16, excuse me, where 18 are required. There will be one handicap space. When necessary, we'll be shuttling people from Veterans Village, which is located at 1150 Las Vegas Boulevard South, which is open 24/7 and never closes. A vast majority of our clients do not have vehicles. We have also been in negotiation with the owner adjacent to the site of that vacant site that used to be a fast food, to do, to lease that lot for overflow parking if necessary. In conclusion, we are grateful for this opportunity to be of service, and we've had several neighborhood and community meetings, some of them, some of them. several neighborhood and community meetings, some of them, and most of them, very lively with our adjacent neighbors, businesses, and nonprofit organizations to work out issues I believe that we have. And I'd like to thank Councilman Barlow and his staff, City of Las Vegas staff, for facilitating and coordinating, along with Mr. Brian Sagert, who's Director of Las Vegas HUD. I appreciate your consideration of this request that's before you, and we look forward to continuing to be of service to people in need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is William Quetta. I live at 1150 Las Vegas Boulevard South, 89104 Veterans Village.
I really don't have anything to say. I just know Arnie's a good guy, and he's done his homework, and, you know... I know he does a good thing for people, for homeless people, and for veterans, and I back him 100%, so I really don't have anything much more to say. I wish Arnie success, and thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Aloha, everybody. I'm originally from Hawaii. I am a veteran Vietnam era, 1969 to 1972. I was homeless here in Las Vegas. And those trials and tribulations for anyone homeless is awesome, awesomely impossible to find a place that you're needed, wanted. And I can't tell you how happy I am not to be homeless now and living at Veterans Village. Other veterans, being able to talk to them from other theaters, other wars, it's like being home again. But not only that, but this gentleman here, awesome. So full of aloha. Akahai, loahahi, uluulu, haahah, ahonui. Those are all the Hawaiian words I can say about this man. Not to be homeless is better. To have something to eat when I can't afford it and available to me. Of all the people who donate to Vote Veterans Village, vendors, God bless them all for supporting this man. I ask you to bless him with your vote, to help him expand maybe Veterans Village for monies, to help to repair a lot of things. The building is aging. I have no planned speech. I speak from the heart. That's where my aloha is. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public discussion and turn this over to the Planning Commission for further comment. Commissioner Truesdale? This is a very tough item, inasmuch as I think what Mr. Stock's trying to do here is commendable. His mission seems to be good. We've had our differences over the last 15 years or so, but what I see here is a lot of the other service providers that are down around this building and other businesses are almost unanimously in opposition to this, and I'm not understanding why, because I don't see many of them here, other than the cards I read that say there's opposition. If this is just a parking issue, I am pretty sure not many of the homeless are driving new cars, and, you know, I think that issue we could resolve, but I think this is more a matter of people concerned that this is another social service provider that may or may not fit the mix down there. So, is staff got any additional input back on that? Peter?
Through you, Vice Chair. The original two applications that were previously obeyed, and then one withdrawn without prejudice, were for a combination of social service provider and a alternate parking demand analysis. The backup material includes the original responses from the notification, includes those protests that were returned to staff based on the social service provider. The applicant has worked with the city and the surrounding neighbors, and the uses have changed. There haven't been additional, other than the ones that came in since the publication, as far as protests or support. So the ones you're looking at are back from February versus after the application type has changed.
Staff feels that there's been a significant change in that application, that those cards of opposition are less relevant today than...
They're predicated on the previous applications that were noticed.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Stock. So it was about a week ago you had your coalition meeting at City Hall. What day was that on? Was it Tuesday? Wednesday? It was Tuesday morning at 8:00, and I happened to pop in just because I wanted to hear from all of the service providers that would be in one room at one time against you, and they were. And everybody was in there, and they were wondering, first and foremost, how you're going to operate with just four parking places, and then the big Pandora's Box opened that the library was going to be shutting down, and between 100 and 200 people would be flocking from the library setting into the setting where you approve, you know, saying that you're going to have a library, you're going to have a place for people to hold their things, you're going to have these little outlying services. And what basically came out of that meeting was none of us wanting you not to do something, but wanting... Everybody kind of wanting us... For you to show us how it was going to work. And there's only one way that this can happen, and the only way that it can happen is, in my opinion, and I'm sure my other commissioners will have another idea, but it seemed to me that the other service providers were comfortable with the fact that if we did approve this zoning tonight, that there would be a six-month and then a one-year administrative review, because we really don't understand exactly what's going to happen with the influx of people, and nor do I think you do as well, because things are changing daily and drastically over there. So when I left that meeting, I felt that you don't have enough parking, because you don't need enough... You know, we don't know if you need that much parking, or if you're going to need more parking. So when everybody else is done speaking, my recommendation tonight will be that we pass this with a six-month administrative review, coming back in front of this Planning Commission with all of your service providers that surround the area invited back to let us know if it's working, if it's not working, and what's going on over there. So how do you feel about that, Mr. Stock?
I appreciate that opportunity and welcome it. I think that should be standard on any request like this.
Because we really don't know.
Well, I...
You know...
One of the things is that the city came to us and asked us if we could, you know, accommodate what's going to happen when the library closes, and we're more than willing to do that. You know, we... There's no set rule in anything, and there's some other providers here tonight. There's... We don't know what's going to happen every day. It changes every single day with the population that we're dealing with.
Right.
But we're more than... We more than welcome that opportunity for a six-month and a one-year review.
And also during that meeting, if you could, for us, for the record, for this commission, could you please go over the hours of operation, starting with Saturday and Sunday, so they be read into the record?
It'll be 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and probably the same on Saturday and Sunday, but again, we don't know exactly what is going to be requested in addition to us from the city.
Okay, so there will be no one sleeping there?
Nobody sleeping on-site.
There will be no one eating there?
No feeding on-site.
No feeding on-site. This is going to be a place for people to get services provided to them, and after six months, my opinion is that you come back, and we look and see how it's worked, and we send people out there to keep an eye on it, and you'll know if it's working, and your neighbors will know if it's working, and I think that's a win-win for everybody today, so...
The first center that I ever did was in 1990, in North Hollywood, California, and we called it a crisis intervention center, and that's exactly... This works like a triage in an emergency room. And we've had the two individuals who are residents tonight were brought here because they came from that situation. We will get... We want to find veteran... I'll just take the veteran populations. Get them off the streets, get them referred out to the other agencies that I mentioned, so they won't have them sleeping in cardboard shacks.
Right.
And we're not... We're open 24/7. We're not closed on the weekend.
Well, that's Veterans Village.
Yeah, but Veterans Village is totally tied to this, because we'll be able to refer... If someone comes into our center, to the CARE Center, and they need help with a veteran, we'll call two or three agencies if we don't have room and place them. If they need another type of special need, if they need to go to the rescue mission, they'll call the rescue mission from there.
Okay. I'm going to leave my comments at that and let my other commissioners speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you, Chairman. I noticed that the four parking places are a big sticking point. You mentioned that you're going to invite a lot of people, unfortunately, a lot of people, to come in and have all kinds of social services, including drug and alcohol counseling, and you mentioned an entire array of different agencies that may be sharing your facilities. And you also mentioned in the backup about the potential issues that there is a discussion about using a 24... I'm sorry, a 2,000-square-foot area built out as a church that you would allow neighborhood churches to use on appropriate days.
No.
That's gone now?
Yeah.
Okay. That was causing major heartburn.
And let me just clarify one thing. We're not going to have a detoxification facility. That's the beauty of crisis intervention, and it works. It absolutely works. Somebody comes in that needs to go to detox, we send them to West Care. There's no detox on the site.
I'm not concerned about the activity that's going on. I'm talking about the employees that are going to be providing those services and where they would park.
Thank you. Commissioner Goines?
Just a couple of questions. I think it's been thoroughly vetted, and this has been an item for quite a while. So how many employees will be here?
Well, the CARE Center will probably have two or three, but when somebody comes from help to get a resident, or to get somebody to... Maybe they need a work... Maybe it's simple as a work card. Or they take them from there. They're not an employee there, but they'll pick them up and they'll take them.
Right.
Or they'll be given a bus pass from there to go.
Right, but your request is for four parking spaces...
Yes, sir.
Where 18 are allowed. So if we approve this tonight, and basically what we're... This is all we're talking about on this, is the parking, but we want to talk about the use. But if we approve this for four spaces, one being and persons with disability, and the other three, is that going to be enough spaces where you won't have people coming in, stack parking on each other, even if they have to come in to pick somebody up?
I don't believe so. And the one thing that we offered in these meetings that the city graciously accommodated in the last meeting, we offered, is we think we have a deal with the guy next door that owns the lot there, Mr. Thrower.
Thrower?
I hate to mention names. I probably shouldn't in a public meeting, but that's...
I know Arnie.
Anyway, yeah, right. And so, he, of course, wants a lot, but we offered to split the difference with the other providers, because they have parking problems, or we'll just pay it ourselves. There is going to... We are going to have overflow parking in the site next door, but we'd like to have the time to get that together. We shuttle now from Veterans Village over to the site, because we get calls from people, social workers, that are already out there that'll find a veteran, and we'll come and pick them up, because we have a van.
And I know I talked with Deacon Tom, and I see him out there. I don't want to put him on the spot, but you okay with everything? If I could just have him come down for a quick second, I... From Catholic Charities. Thank you.
Good evening. Deacon Tom Roberts, representing Catholic Charities, 1501 Las Vegas Boulevard North. Thank you for the ability to address the question. As I said in my letter and my response to the application, we certainly support Arnie's plan for the reduced services. We just remain concerned, as was discussed here, that there just won't be enough parking. And I'd made the suggestion that we perhaps consider some sort of an interim review of six months or a year to ensure that operations can be fluid with the services that are provided. Many of you know that we service over 500 men every single evening in our shelter, and 250 every single day in our shelter. So we're checking hundreds of bags every single day, and it takes at least two or three people to manage that process during the day and in the evenings. We commend the applicant for their commitment to continue to try to work with us, to try to help those people that are in need. We also know that sadly, there are a lot of people that live out of their cars and that are using their cars to navigate the social service network. Again, we just want to make sure that whatever services are coming to the neighborhood that are going to provide more assistance to the neighborhood and to the clients, we'll do so in a way that will be accretive to their service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have any more concerns with this. I just wanted to... To the veteran up there, both of you guys, I just wanted to thank you for our service. I work at Workforce Connections, One Stop Career Center, so I work directly with the population that Arnie deals with every day, and I just wanted to offer that veteran, if you want. I'll give you a quick story. I had a guy from the Army come in today, and I sent him out to an interview at about 12:30. At about 2:00 o'clock, he came back in my office with his uniform shirts, and he was hired not only for one job, but for two positions at one company, and so that's another veteran that we now have on the payroll. If you're looking to work, Arnie, have her come down and see me, and it'd be my pleasure to help the veterans' population. Without that, any more comments or questions? I'll turn it back over to the chairman, and I'll be ready to make a motion at your discretion.
Yes, just a few comments. Reading this a few months ago, got held in advance a few times, completely scaled back from what you're looking at doing previously, feel a lot more comfortable with it. I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody else said up here. I would like to see a six-month review, and that would be a six-month review at the Planning Commission, not administrative? Is that correct? And if I'm ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of abeyance re-notification, SUP 7330, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions. I'd also like to add an additional condition for a six-month Planning Commission review. This will be a non-administrative review, and that would be my motion.
Mr. Chairman or Mr. Vice Chairman, could we clarify? Would that be as a public hearing, or as not as a public hearing?
A public hearing.
As a public hearing.
That is correct.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries, noting the abstention of Chairman Moody. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, item 22 will be heard at City Council on July 15, 2015.
I want Arnie to make sure he noticed I voted yes on his item for a change.
Items 23 and 24 are related. Item 23 is ZON 59062. The applicant is Dr. Russell Shaw, and the owner is Juan Antonio Servin Sampedrio. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to O Office at 2500 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 1, staff recommends approval. Item 29, SDR 59063, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed parking facility with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east property line where eight feet is the minimum required in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, as the proposal... Before we go forward, abstaining on this item, inasmuch as this... I live directly in the notice area and also have incidental business relationship with Dr. Shaw as a landlord, so I, in abundance of caution, I will abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, as the proposed zoning district is compatible with the general plan and the allowable uses within the proposed zoning district are compatible with the surrounding land uses in zoning district, staff is in support of the application and recommends approval. Regarding the site development plan review, staff finds the proposed reduction of landscape material... material adjacent to the existing commercial properties is acceptable, as this site will facilitate parking for the property to the west. Meanwhile, the property to the east has established landscape buffer. Furthermore, future development of the remaining portion of sites will require subsequent site development plan review. In light of these facts, staff is in support of the site development plan review and recommends approval. Please note additional letters of protest has been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi. Russell J. Shaw, I own the property at 2622 and 2628 West Charleston, next to this property at 2500 West Charleston, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89102.
Good evening, Dr. Shaw.
Good evening.
Anything to say about the application?
The property, I have a business, an urgent care. My wife's a physician in town with myself and, as a neurologist, and I've been there since about 2006. We've gotten very busy. We have a tenant MRI, and, and we have, I guess about 20 parking spots being utilized on Shetland Road. Our, so we needed some space. The adjacent property looks exactly like our property. It's 2500 West Charleston. Mr. Juan Servin, who's here, he's actually the property owner. We've made a lease to have parking. I'm actually not using my property, because we have, we have only like 28 parking spots for 10,600 square feet. So to be quite honest with you, we have a massive parking problem on Shetland Avenue. There's no streets and lights, so I thought it'd be, makes more sense for me just to have some parking next door. And we'll just try and, and we'll try, we'll probably, I'm not too sure, but we'll probably in the future make into another medical office, surgical center, or something like that in the future, as we, we develop based on, as the growth of the city continues.
Okay. Thank you, Shaw. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Juan Servin, owner at 2500 West Charleston Boulevard, and I am here today to support Dr. Shaw's project, since this house is all in, actually the last residential on the avenue. So it will be great for the beauty of the whole neighborhood to do some upgrades, since this tenant improvement comes on.
Okay, thank you. This is open for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard either for or against this item? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the planning commission?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Shaw. It was nice meeting you and spending the time with you that I did. When I was there at 11:30 Friday morning, there were 18 cars on Shetland. There were 11 cars in the dirt road, south of Shetland, west of Shetland. There was a total of 35 cars parked illegally. And then in your lot that you're going to pave and stripe and make right, there were 18 cars just parked all over the place like a mumble jumble. So this is a necessity for this area. It's a safety issue for the children that go to Howard Wozden Elementary School, and if there is no discussion, I'd be happy to make the motion on the side of the seat.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding item number 23, zoning 590062, I would make the motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion carries. Item 23 is approved.
Thank you. Regarding item number 24, SDR 59063, to allow the landscape buffer at the east side to be zero, and also to ensure that there will be one handicap parking place in this lot that will be closest to the street or closest to the sidewalk for handicap accessibility. So my motion is for approval of SDR 59063.
Thank you. The motion is to approve item 24 with the stated conditions. Please vote. That motion also carries.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 23 and 24 will be heard at the City Council meeting on July 15th, 2015.
Okay, thank you. We've been going about two hours, so this is probably a good time for a 10-minute recess. We're in recess. Okay, we're ready to get started again, and we're going to pick up where we left off with item 25, VAR 59047. The applicant owner is Equity Link Properties LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow no sidewalks, amenity zone, or gate on a private street where such are required, on the southeast corner of Rosado Way and Jones Boulevard in Ward 6. Related item 26, VAR 59048, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow no amenity zone on Jones Boulevard and to allow no off-site improvements on Rosado Way where such are required in Ward 6. And then item 27, the third related item, WVR 59049. This is for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights on Jones Boulevard, Rosado Way, and a proposed private street where streetlights are required, and to allow a 166-foot intersection offset where 220 feet is required in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial on all three items. May we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of one parcel totaling 100, 1.93 acres of land located on the southeast corner of Rosado Way and Jones Boulevard. The applicant is proposing to split the parcel into four residential lots by way of a parcel map. The applicant is further proposing not to provide streetlights or sidewalks inside and outside of the development, with the exception of the existing ones on Jones Boulevard, to allow no gate on a private residential street that does not meet complete street standards, as well as to allow an hour street intersection offset that cone requires. Although staff can support the intersection offset, the remaining deviations are not supported. As a result, staff recommends denial of all three applications associated with the request. If approved, staff would like to add the following conditions of approval to WVR 59049. First one being- First one being, this approval shall be void two years from the date of final approval unless exercised pursuant to the provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19.62. An extension of time may be filed for consideration by the City of Las Vegas. Number two, these conditional approvals shall be affixed to the cover sheet of any plans set submitted for building permit. Number three, all city code requirements and design standards for all city departments must be satisfied, except as modified herein. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Moody and fellow commissioners, David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering, 73 Tan Smoke Ranch Road, Suite E in Las Vegas. Very pleased to bring this site before you tonight. It has been sitting idle, although partially graded for the last eight years. It is a four-lock parcel map. There was one note which staff did pick up. There are currently streetlights on Jones. That's under the waiver, but there are already streetlights there. I know there are three parts here, and so I'll be considering them all separately. On the first one, the variance 590479, we would recommend that you approve these, and I am satisfied with the conditions that are there.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment. Gentlemen, come on up. Please state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jim Clickner, 5925 Rosado Way. My house adjoins this property. I talked to Mr. Ross by phone when I got the notification that this was coming up, and he got me in touch with Mr. Dwyer. And we got all the neighbors together Friday at my house. And to keep this as brief as we can, we had a neighborhood meeting for the street, and I'm speaking for them. Gary will speak for himself. But they all agree that the variance is with Mr. Dwyer, that we should do away with them. No sidewalks, no streetlights, no curb and gutter, because we are rural. And I'm sure after some of the other meetings that I've been to here lately and such with this area, I'm sure some of the commissioners have driven through there, looking at various properties and such. And we don't have any streetlights. We have them on Leon, next to Los Prados. We have them on Jones, but we're pretty rural. The horses, it's great. So we just want it to stay the way it is, and I think their project is looking very well.
Thank you very much. How many neighbors would you say were at that meeting on Friday night?
Everybody on the street except for one.
And how many is that?
Let me see, there's Charlotte, me, there's two, and there's Bill Hicks, Chuck across the street, the other, Gary was there. So, what, seven?
Okay. Great.
There's seven of us.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Gary Delia. I live at 5800 West Rosado Way. I've been there for fifteen years. It's rural. What we'd like to see is that blend in with the rural, you know? With no sidewalks, nothing like that. Plus, you can see the stars at night, you understand? We'd like to keep it that way if we could.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this item, these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any discussion on the planning commission? Commissioner Truesdale?
If I understand the comments correctly, the existing improvements that are on Jones will have the streetlights, will be done appropriately, right?
The current request, as noticed, is to have no amenity zone as far as the complete street standard on Jones, and to allow no off-site improvements, which would be the sidewalk in regards to Rosada. The streetlights that exist on Jones, I believe them to remain. Lucian may want to comment on that.
Okay. I mean, I understand the neighbors, and it's great that they've gotten together and talked about what they want as their rural area, but I do believe the improvements that are on Jones should meet our requirements, which I think won't impact that project or impact the neighbors. It just kind of makes that complete, or that section from Washburn South, safe and cohesive. So, other than that, I'm willing to support the rest of the requests.
Thank you. Can we hear from Public Works?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, on Jones, there are two existing driveways that under construction will be removed and replaced with curb, gutter, and sidewalk because they were built previously, and the streetlights are already there. So, for the most part, all of the required improvements are on Jones already.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Truesdale, yes, we will have complete half-street improvements on Jones, and those driveways that are there, as he said, will be removed and regular sidewalks put in.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, question for Public Works. A couple of your conditions state that monies in lieu of such deferred streetlights, including foundations, may be contributed to the city if allowed by the Department of Public Works. Can you explain, is that going to be a requirement? What's may, maybe, maybe required, or?
That's on the next variance, which we haven't talked about yet.
Please.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you, with this particular set of items, we did something a little bit different than what we normally do. Instead of, you know, getting all the improvements, or none of the improvements, we basically broke the conditions of variance 59048 into three separate items. Basically, curb and gutter is one, sidewalk is one, and the streetlights is the other. So, if the commission is inclined to grant the request for no improvements, then you will need to delete conditions five and six of that variance. As far as the streetlights are concerned, what we do is, at the time of construction, when they come in, we look at our current bond estimate costs, and we have them contribute in the amount towards a streetlight contribution fund, which can be used anywhere in the city. But they don't have to install the streetlights, but they do contribute to the streetlight fund. That's what that condition requires, and it will be required when they come in for construction, if that condition is approved, as is.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, another question through you for Public Works. And possibly for Planning. Can you explain what the amenity zone on Jones means? I know what it means downtown, but what would the amenity zone be that they're not providing?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. On the complete street standard, the standard actually calls for a, I believe, this is a three-foot segment of landscaped area, and there's existing improvements on this. They would, they would need to have a, basically with landscape buffering adjacent to the sidewalk, and this would eliminate that requirement.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, last comment, I'd agree with Commissioner Truesdale. I think that the improvements along Jones should go in. I could understand not having sidewalks and streetlights on Rosada and/or even on-site. We've done this a lot in the past on, in these rural areas here recently, but I agree. I think, I think Jones needs to be approved properly.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Mr. Dwyer, there have been some comments. I'm going to ask you just for some very brief, a brief reply.
Yes, the items number five and six, I forgot we were dealing with those, that variance at the same time. Yes, those two we want struck, but we will do all the agreements on Jones, and as I said, we'll just keep Rosada rural.
Okay, thank you. Let me say, you know, the city always has to take into consideration walkability in a neighborhood, water flow, and pedestrian safety, but this, this is one of those parts of town where we have to, we have to consider the rural nature of that neighborhood, and because of that, I'm willing to support this. So, I don't know if anyone wants to take a shot at crafting a motion based on the additional three conditions that have been stated, and the proposal to delete conditions five and six.
Just for clarification, items five and six, under, that would be under VAR 59048? Is that correct?
Yep. That is correct.
My only other question, Chairman, is, I'm sorry for my confusion here, but that's stating that they don't have to construct the half-street improvements and L-curb on Rosado Way, or anything dealing with Rosada, but if we make a motion for approval, we're basically approving for them to allow no amenity zone on Jones Boulevard?
We can break that up. I think it's our choice how we want to do this. But I'll take a shot at this. I would move for approval of VAR 59047, subject to all planning conditions, deleting Public Works conditions five and six, and under the Jones, I wish I forgot which one.
Excuse me, Mr. Commissioner Truesdale, that would be on 49, 59048.
The next one, okay. So, on VAR 59048, I would move for approval with the deletion of five and six.
So, do you want to take item 25 first, just so we take them in order?
Twenty-five first, if you want. I thought I was, actually.
So, let's have a motion just on 25. Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on item 25, VAR 59047, I move to follow, I move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
The motion on item 25 is for approval. Go ahead and post. Motion to approve item 25 carries. Now, let's go back to Commissioner Truesdale for a motion on item 26.
Okay, with regards to VAR, actually 26, VAR 59048, move for approval, subject to all staff's planning conditions, and all Public Works conditions, deleting five and six.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to approve item 26, noting the conditions, both additional and deleted.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just clarification. So, we're deleting item five and six, but we're allowing no amenity zone on Jones Boulevard?
Is that your motion, Commissioner Truesdale?
Yes, it is.
Please vote. Item 26 is approved. And finally, item 27.
Waiver, WVR 59049, move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve item 27. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, that's with added conditions?
With the additional conditions.
With the additional three.
With the additional three conditions that are stated, to which the applicant has agreed.
Yes.
Motion to approve item 27 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 25, 26, and 27 will be heard at the city council meeting on July 15, 2015.
Thank you.
Could I ask for a repeat, re-stating of the three conditions on item 26? I hope they're saying that I'm going to fix this Jones Boulevard.
The condition says, were read into the record and submitted to the clerk, I state, this approval shall be void within two years from the date of final approval unless exercised pursuant to provision Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19.16. Extension of time may be filed for consideration by the City of Las Vegas. Condition number two is, condition of approval shall be affixed to the cover sheet of any plans set submitted for building permit. Condition number three was, all city code requirements and design standards for all city departments must be satisfied, except as modified herein.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Understand, and, Mr. Trues, Vince, no, Vice Chair, we will be completing the half-street improvements on Jones. Those amenities will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Moving on to related items 28 and 29. Item 28, VAR 59050, the applicant owner is Victor Hecker at AL. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow an 11-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for a previously approved convalescent care facility slash nursing home at the southwest corner of Elkhorn Road and Jones Boulevard in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Item 29, SDR 59051, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, that is, SDR 53497, for a 24-bed convalescent care facility slash nursing home with a waiver to allow zero foot to 11-foot landscape buffer along the east perimeter where 15 feet is required, also on Ward Six. Staff again recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this request is the result of a survey that revealed a wider right-of-way along a portion of Jones Boulevard that abuts this parcel on the east. A variance to reduce the corner side yard setback is now required along with a waiver of a reduction of landscape buffer with previously approved use, and the site development permit have been found to be compatible with the surrounding area, and these requests will not detract from that. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Victor Hecker, 9961 Spider Creek Court, 89149. Got to go in front of the speaker.
Kevin Thistle, 7383 Attacoma Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm the architect.
You're in agreement with all the staff's conditions?
We concur with staff's recommendations, yes, sir.
Okay. No additional comments?
None whatsoever. You guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak for or against these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Entertain any comments, questions from the planning commission. Commissioner Quinn?
There are no comments, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Truesdale, did you have anything? Yes, please do.
Thank you. Regarding item number 28, variance 59050, I make a motion for approval following all of staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Motion is to approve item 28 following staff's recommendation. Please vote. Motion to approve item 28 carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 29, SDR 59051, I make a motion for approval following all of staff's recommendations.
Motion is to approve item 29. Please vote. And post. Motion also carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 28 and 29 are final action unless appealed to the city corps' office within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
Moving on to related items 30 and 31. Item 30, VAR 59053, the applicant is Southwest Specialties Incorporated. The owner is Prestige Worldwide LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow no sidewalk, curb, and gutter where such are required at 4505 Balsam Street in Ward Four. Staff recommends denial. Related item 31, ROC 59056, for possible action on a request for a review of condition of an approved site development plan review, SDR 50483, to delete condition 14, which states, quote, "Construct all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to this site, and remove all existing substandard street improvements and unused driveway cuts adjacent to this site, and replace with new improvements, meeting current city standards within two years from the date of this approval," unquote. And to delete condition 17, which states, quote, "The site shall connect to public sewer in Redcoach Avenue and abandon in the individual sewage disposal system, ISDS, according to SNHD regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for this site," unquote, in Ward Four. Staff recommends denial on both items. May we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, I'm staying on these items as much as my business partner owns the adjacent property.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, on September 10th, 2013, the applicant came in and agreed to construct the required improvements within two years from the date of that approval. Since then, the planning, this commission approved Somerset Academy immediately to the east of this site, and Somerset Academy is under construction for the east half of Balsam Street adjacent to their site, currently meeting city standards. The cul-de-sac to the south on Balsam Street was constructed with full asphalt, curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and a streetlight. gutter, and sidewalk, and a streetlight. With that project when it came in for development in around 1991. Therefore, Public Works recommends denial of both the variance and review of condition requests. If approved, the applicant will be required to sign a covenant running with land agreement and receive approval from the Southern Nevada Health District for a commercial septic tank.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. David Turner with Baughman and Turner Engineering, representing the applicant here tonight. I'll give you a little lay of the land here. This site sits on Balsam Street at the end of this cul-de-sac here. This is Rainbow Boulevard, Red Coach here. This is Balsam. LDS Church sits at the corner of Red Coach and Rainbow. This is Somerset Academy that's under construction right now. These three properties adjacent to our sites, and actually, items number 32 and 33 are identical items to what I'm representing right now, they're going to be the same request. These are county-owned properties, zoned already currently. They're master-planned office professional. Back in 2012, my clients purchased these two sites here with the understanding that the projects were... The sites were zoned in. There was existing buildings that were converted to an office, so they thought. They started... They got their business sizes, started construction. Code enforcement came out and told them that they weren't in compliance with the residential-commercial conversion. So, two years ago, we brought this before you with a site development plan review. And with that being said, we were required to put in the off-site improvements. At that time, with my justification letter, I had asked for a waiver of the off-site improvements, but apparently, we weren't able to do that at the meeting. It was, I believe, because you don't allow a waiver of the off-site improvements with the actual justification letter. Doug can correct me on that. But with that being said, so, the last year, we've been trying to get this thing approved. It's become a real financial burden for these property owners. It's going to cost them upwards of $400,000 to put those improvements in there. They've got power poles they're going to have to relocate or underground. Currently, there's pavement along this entire stretch here that serves those property. They're going to have basically full asphalt paving along that stretch there. The only thing that they're not going to have is curb gutter and sidewalk along that stretch. This is a dead-end road here. It doesn't really serve anybody but these two properties. Somerset Academy will be taking access to the property here at this point here and routing people through over to Rainbow. The sewer originally was going to be coming up with this batting cage project was supposed to come up from Rainbow to the intersection of Red Coach and Balsam. That project is not moving forward anymore. They're in negotiations with Somerset Academy to turn that into a park. So, now, the sewer is all the way over here at Rainbow and Red Coach. So, this has become a real financial burden for these two property owners. We met with Councilman Anthony earlier in the year, and he recommended that we come before you with the variance, and that's why we're here, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on these items? Good evening, sir.
Bill Moore, 6160 El Camino. I am the qualifying employee for Southwest Specialties, which is actually the one closest to the cul-de-sac. I am here to tell you and verify that the hardship that this would create... This is a company that does about $3,000,000, $3,500,000 worth of work a year. At today's current... They were able to keep their doors open through the economy. At today's market, they'll have to do two years' worth of work to pay for these improvements. So, I just want to kind of throw that out there. As far as the sewer goes, there's two full-time employees, so there's a septic system there currently. To pay $400,000 was a hundred and...
It was $105,000.
$105,000 to bring a sewer line for two employees seems kind of expensive.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and see if there's any discussion amongst the planning commissioners. I do have a question for the applicant. If we could go back to the first map we were looking at? Just to the north of your property, there's a big covered asphalt lot. What is that?
This here?
Yes.
That's actually a portion of the residence to the north of us. It's residential's own property, but he's paved that, and they're parking semis on that currently. But that is a county-owned property, and there's nothing we can really do about that. This entire stretch along here has all been paved.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with our property.
That's correct.
So, you're not using that property to park?
We are not.
Equipment on?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I mean, I remember when this site come in, we bent over backwards, and we gave them hundreds of waivers. I'm exaggerating. But there was... I mean, there was just so much stuff that we granted, and I could understand if you don't want... I mean, bringing in a sewer from two blocks away, but say that you don't even want to construct the half-street improvements with sidewalks. I don't see how we can... I can vote for approval on something like that. The condition is that you'd have to meet with the Southern Nevada Health District to see if you can even get the septic tanks. You know, that's more up to them, not necessarily me. But for just getting rid of the half-street improvements, it wouldn't see my support. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just say, I echo Commissioner Schlotman's comments. I mean, here we are at the expiration of the two-year extension, and, you know, you say it's a hardship, yet the adjacent properties were requiring them to make the half-street improvements, and they're compliant. So, it doesn't seem fair to me to ask them to do it and to give you either another extension or allow a way around it. So, I'm afraid I'm going to have to vote to follow staff's recommendation for denial. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Item number 31, ROC 59056, to follow staff's...
Let's start with item 30, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number 30 is the variance of 59053. I would like to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
The motion is to follow staff's recommendation for denial on item 30. So, a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny item 30 carries, noting the abstention from Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, before Vicky makes the next motion, could I get clarification on the difference between "to allow no sidewalk, curb, and gutter where such are required," and the difference between that and the deletion of the condition number 14 that says, "Complete all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to the cuts of the site?"
Mr. Chairman, through you. Since the item was denied, there are no changes to the conditions. Conditions stay as stated. There is no...
But you have it on both item 30 and 31.
We can amend that if there's an error there, and I'll defer to Public Works if there's an error. We can amend that.
Mr. Chair, through you. I think if I understand the question, it's like, why do we have a variance and an ROC?
Yes.
I don't know. They are essentially accomplishing the same thing, I think, in my opinion. The ROC is to remove the conditions. The variance is to not require the conditions. It's...
Six and a half dozen of the other.
Yeah.
All right. It is a public hearing item, so we will have a vote on that unless you have any follow-up questions.
The only thing is, I would be willing to, you know, delete item 17, condition 17, but not delete item 14 on ROC 59056.
I'd like to hear from a city attorney. I guess it doesn't matter if the vote is for denial.
Doesn't matter at this point. Because I think that you voted to deny the item.
Okay. Let me just, through you, Chairman. The only thing that I was trying to say was, if they want to go through the process of trying to work through the Southern Nevada Health District to not tie in to the public sewer two blocks away, and they want to go try achieving that, I don't have an issue with that. However, I would like to see the sidewalks in. So, this is multiple items on this one agenda item. It's not review of one condition, it's review of two conditions on the same agenda item, which is number 31.
So, let's do this. Let's have a motion, and then, depending on the outcome of that motion, it may come into play as to what you do with conditions. So, Commissioner Quinn?
Trinity, would you like to make that motion? You seem to understand those two flip-flops over there, and I didn't catch it like you did. That would be item number 31, sir.
But just before you do that, let's hear a comment from Public Works.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, so if I understand the request, if it's the desire of the commission to approve it, they could delete condition two of the ROC, so that would still require the offsites. But you could keep condition number three, which basically still makes them go to the Southern Nevada Health District to see if they can keep the septic tank. But I don't know if, since the variance was denied, if the ROC can be approved. I'm not sure. But if the idea is to keep the sewer, I believe you would move to approve the ROC, deleting condition number two under Public Works of the ROC.
And let me just review item number two.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To clarify on the ROC, if you wish to keep that, you would approve the ROC to delete condition number 14, and that would be the motion. You wouldn't discuss the motion number 17 at all. You would just approve the one item, and then that other condition would remain.
So, approving item number 31, deleting number 14. Correct.
Correct. The motion is to delete item number 14, and then item 17 would remain.
And can I just hear from staff what the effect of that would be? What are we actually voting for if the motion is for approval of item 31, deleting condition number 14?
And let me just say, when we say, "Condition number 14," it's of the previously approved SDR, and it's condition number two of the current ROC. So, it's kind of saying the same thing. You know, condition number two of the ROC is condition number 14 of the previous SDR. And I think, like I was saying, if we... If you approve the ROC, deleting condition number two of the ROC, that still requires the sidewalk, curb, and gutter, and everything that was required under the original SDR. But it allows them to go back to the Southern Nevada Health District to pursue not installing the sewer.
Okay. I think I could take a stab at this. So, on item number 31, ROC, review of condition... Excuse me, 59056, I would move to approve, removing item two of this ROC, which was a previous condition number 14, and following all of staff's other recommendations for approval. And specifically, that means they still have to put in the half-street improvements, but they can go take another shot at SNHD, at getting their septic tank installed.
Okay. So, before we vote, I would need to hear from the applicant that you would be agreeable to that.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable. I appreciate that. That's what I think you're trying to accomplish, is let us go forward with the sewer, delete the sewer, and if we can get the Southern Nevada Health District to approve our application, then we're good to go, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So, you do agree to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, that is my motion.
Okay. The motion is made to approve item 31 with the stated deleted condition. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item 31 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 30 and 31 will be heard at City Council on July 15, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to related items 32 and 33. 32 is VAR 59057. The applicant is Concrete Solutions, and the owner is Jaime or Jaime Lopez and Ruffigio Espinoza Lopez. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow no sidewalk, curb, and gutter where such are required at 4515 Balsam Street in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. And related item 33, ROC 59058, for possible action on a request for a review of condition of an approved site development plan review, SDR 48826, to delete condition number 13, which states, quote, "Construct all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to this site and remove all existing substandard street improvements and unused driveway cuts adjacent to this site and replace with new improvements meeting current city standards within two years from the date of this approval," unquote. And to delete condition 16, which states, quote, "The site shall connect to public sewer in Red Coach Avenue and abandon the individual sewage disposal system, ISDS, according to SNHD regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for this site," unquote, in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please. Public Works.
Mr. Chairman, on June 11, 2013, the applicant came in and agreed to construct the required improvements within two years from the date of that approval. Since then, this commission has approved Somerset Academy immediately to the east of this site, and Somerset Academy is constructing the east half of Balsam Street adjacent to their site, meeting current city standards. The cul-de-sac to the south on Balsam Street was constructed with full asphalt, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a streetlight. And the project, when it came in for development, in or around 1991. Therefore, Public Works recommends denial of both the variance and review of condition requests. If approved, the applicant will be required to sign a covenant running with land agreement and receive approval from the Southern Nevada Health District for a commercial septic tank.
Okay, thank you. Again, your name and address.
Good evening. David Turner with Baughman and Turner, representing the applicant. I won't bore you with the details. It's the same as the previous application, so.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any additional comments, questions on these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on items 32 and 33.
Mr. Chairman, on item 32, VAR 59057, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion is to deny item 32. A yes vote is for denial. Please vote. And please post. Motion to deny item 32 carries, noting Commissioner Truesdale's abstention. Item 33?
Yes, Chairman... Mr. Chairman, item 33, review of condition 59058, I would make a motion to strike condition two, previous condition 13, which would require them to still put in the off-site improvements, but leave in condition three in place underneath Public Works, which will allow them to go back to Southern Nevada Health District to see if they can get their septic system.
Motion is to approve item 33, striking condition number two. Please vote. I'm sorry, just before we post this, I want to make sure the applicant agrees to that.
We're in agreement with that.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to approve item 33 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 32 and 33 will be heard at City Council on July 15, 2015.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gouens, Commissioner Truesdale, appreciate your service, and it's been a pleasure working with you over the years.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 34, VAR 5894. The applicant owner is Y&amp;B Investments LLC. This is for possible action on a request for a variance to allow zero additional parking spaces where five additional spaces are required at 2521 South Fort Apache Road in Ward 2. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, this site is parking impaired and currently consists of one office space and three restaurant uses. The applicant is requesting to expand an existing 840-square-foot restaurant located in Suite 102 into the adjacent suite of 103, which was previously occupied by dry cleaners. According to Title 19, a restaurant use has more intense parking requirements than the previous dry cleaner's use. The proposed variance request would account for the increase in parking that is required of five additional parking spaces. The staff finds the variance to be self-imposed, as opposed to expansion of the restaurant is too intense for this site to accommodate due to their lack of parking, and staff recommends denial. Please note... Please note, we've received additional letters of protest since publication.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, seeing as how Casey Camus is architect on this project and, hi, Jesse, and I've done a lot of work with Casey in the past, and I don't know if everything is a hundred percent paid because I just got a set of plans out in the city, so just to be on the safe side, I'll go ahead and abstain on this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Jason Mayhew, six five two Mittelgate, Henderson, Nevada, and I'm here representing the owner of Y&amp;B Investments and also the owner of the restaurant, Schwarma Vegas, who that is currently there. The restaurant owner recently purchased this business from somebody else and their plans are to create a kosher butchery there, so it would be a kosher butchery and a restaurant in that location. And to do that, we needed to expand to the next space, so we had enough kitchen room, storage and all of that stuff for the butchery, moving the dining room over to the next space. Basically, we've been told by planning that anything that goes into that space, space one oh three there where the cleaners was, anything that goes in there besides a cleaners or something that has that exact parking requirement would require a variance. So nothing could occupy that space at all if they had any greater parking requirement than the cleaners. So it's, we would ask for your approval on this variance as to expand a current business and hopefully bring a kosher butchery to town, which from what I am told, there is not any longer, there's no longer one in town at all. So this would be the only kosher butchery in town along with a restaurant there also.
Okay, thank you. This item is now open for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Truesdale.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, I understand, I mean, you're doing a butchery, you're not expanding the existing restaurant area, you're, most of that is all back of house, right?
Correct, yes. It's just basically taking the existing dining room and moving it over to the next space so that way we'd have that existing whole space that basically has back of house for the butchery and the kitchen area.
Okay, and based on that, I think the intent and the expansion can be properly, you know, operate from this location. So if there are no other comments or questions, I would move for approval.
Looks like we do have one comment from Commissioner Trowbridge.
I was just ready to make the motion. I think we're going to the same direction.
Okay, let's hear the motion.
Move for approval subject to all staff's conditions as if approved.
Motion is to approve item thirty-four. Please vote. Please post. Vice Chair is abstaining on this one. There you go. Motion to approve item thirty-four carries noting the vice chair's abstention on that.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty-four is final action unless appealed to City Clerk's Office within ten days.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Related items thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven. Thirty-five, WVR five nine two one one. The applicant owner is Craig Johnson for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no street lights where such are required at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway in Monte Cristo Way in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Item thirty-six, VAR five nine zero three one, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow no half-street improvements, including amenity zone and sidewalk where such are required in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. And finally, related item VAR five nine zero two nine, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a twenty-foot front yard setback where fifty feet is required in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the city adopted complete streets as part of Title Nineteen a few years ago. Complete streets are designed to create safe access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists. Although the adjacent properties of the site are currently within Clark County jurisdiction, they do not have offsite improvements, there are currently half-street improvements across the roadway to this site on Tropical Parkway in Monte Cristo. There's been no substantial evidence presented to warrant the requested waiver in two variances and as such, staff has recommended denial. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Craig Johnson, six thousand Monte Cristo, North Monte Cristo Way. I'll give you a little history on this. This was, I bought this in the county. The property was in the county. I bought it March of last year, not knowing that the interlocal had expired, which was gifted to me as I bought it. To find out when I started the process of my due diligence to move forward, I was told that I could file the interlocal, stay in the county and wouldn't have to do anything. I have since met with Councilman Ross as I found out that I would have to be annexed, annexed into the city. He said, just file the variance for the setback on the property and that, you know, the offsite shouldn't be an issue. He says, you know, because it's the urban, you know, we have an urban setup there. I have no, there's no real physical traffic in there. There's some kids that jump over the fences adjoining the property. I face a ten-foot wall. There's a drainage passageway, a crash gate for a fire, and then another ten-foot block wall. Everything in our property right in that area, that general area, is either not developed or an urban type development where people, you know, they just don't have, they don't have sidewalks on our sides of the street. You know, this was a county island. I'm the only person on that corner, you know, that would be in the city, you know. Even talking to Councilman Ross, he said, you know, he didn't like the idea of just building out a little piece of it because it never works outright. He says, you know, this would be better if it was just left as urban. I do have streetlights across the street. I don't know, you know, they made me file another variance. He called me in regards to filing the variance or the waiver for the streetlights. I think I'm only required to have it on half side anyways, and it's on the, it's on the opposing side of the street there, as you can see in the picture on the left there, so. And, you know, like I said, I thought I bought in the county, I bought in the county because I wanted that urban look. I wanted the feel of that and with this, you know, you can see, as you can see, my neighbors all the way up the way, there's no development at the corner at Tropical and Tenaya. There's, and there's no, there's only one other house besides the one that's adjacent to mine on the side of the street, all the way down Monte Cristo. There's only one other adjoining house, or one house down that street, so.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, I'll open this for public comment as anyone wish to be heard. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. See if there's any discussion. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is probably one of the most unique streets in the Northwest. I mean, you go down Tropical to Monte Cristo and you're just at the back fences of three different subdivisions. So it really emphasized, reemphasized the county island that was, that's there and the fact that now you're in the city and have to meet our requirements is a little different. I, there are no other improvements along those, any of those streets on that half. And at the most, there's probably going to be three or four more houses developed down there. And some maybe in the future. So I think the applicant is pretty, you know, been pretty straightforward to the fact that this is a, creates an undue hardship on that island parcel and if there are no comments or questions.
I do have a few comments and a question. When was the last time you spoke with the mayor pro temp, Ross?
Right before I filed my annexation, which was about September, October last year.
Okay.
Which has been a long-drawn, arguise process of that and then filing the variances and everything else. My permits are ready. I'm just waiting for this, so.
Yeah, I'll be honest, this is a tough one for me. You've heard us vote on several like items tonight.
Right.
And I want to be consistent, you know, on one hand, where we have a rural area, we want to protect that, at the same time, you heard me vote on one where, you know, on adjacent properties, they have done the half-site improvements. And right across the street, we've got those improvements. For me, this is an important corner for those improvements and it is an island, it's unique, but I struggle with this.
Also, in the, moving forward in, when I was doing my annexation, one of the things that they did say in my annexation paperwork is that as, when it does come about and it will be developed, there will be an assessment and they will do the improvements at that time. So, I mean, it will be at that time when they finally come around to doing that.
Okay, you know, I, this is such a close call. It would surprise me to see which way, you know, my fellow commissioners vote on this. If it does get denied, you still have the opportunity to go in front of City Council on it. So with that, I think I've stated my concerns and unfortunately, I won't be able to support this, but let's have that motion, Commissioner.
Well, before he does, let me just make a quick comment. And, you know, coming into this, I looked at it totally different and, you know, I always like to get our half-street improvements. I think the thing that's different about this than the last one is the other one had the school or the YMCA across from it and had a whole bunch of commercial buildings up and down that street. And I thought that there was, you know, ways to get from these various subdivisions onto that street, but it doesn't look like there's any access from any of those subdivisions onto Monte, Monte Cristo Way or Tropical Way. And considering that everything back here is RE, I would have a little bit easier time, you know, supporting this and seeing that condition number five, sign a covenant running with the land for possible future installation of half-street improvements, kind of makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about this particular item.
Okay, then no other comments? Mr. Chairman, move for approval on item thirty-three, subject to all staff's as if approved conditions?
Item thirty-five.
Or thirty-five?
Yeah. Okay, motion is for approval of item thirty-five. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item thirty-six?
Move for approval on item thirty-six, subject to all staff's conditions as approved.
Please vote. Motion is for approval. Please post. I'm sorry, will you change my vote to a no vote? That motion also carries.
Item thirty-seven, move for approval subject to all staff's as approved conditions.
Motion is to approve item thirty-seven. Please vote and post. Motion to approve item thirty-seven also carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven will be heard at City Council on July fifteenth, twenty fifteen.
Okay, moving on to item thirty-eight, SUP five eight nine one three. The applicant is PPS Two LLC. The owner is Boca Park Marketplace Syndications Group LLC. This is for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within a proposed three thousand four hundred seventy-nine square foot general personal service use. That is an instructional art studio at one thousand South Rampart Boulevard, Suite Ten in Ward Two. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed instructional art studio is located within existing thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty square foot commercial building, which is part of an existing six hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-four square foot shopping center. Proposed beer wine cooler on sale use, an instructional art studio would occupy a suite with thirty-four hundred and seventy-nine square feet of interior space. The proposed use is consistent with Title Nineteen, is compatible with the other restaurants, retail and office uses located within the surrounding community. Staff therefore recommends approval of the requested special use permit with conditions. Please note, additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jonathan Nguyen, four hundred, South Rampart, Suite four hundred, here on behalf of the applicant. As mentioned, the applicant is an instructional painting studio that wants to add a beer and wine element to their business. This is a very popular type of business all over town. They operate, this particular client operates a painting studio in the district in Henderson. It's been doing very well, so they're expanding up into Boca Park and they would like to have the beer and wine sales there as well. And just, we thank staff for their recommendation of approval. And one thing I just wanted to clarify, if possible, is condition number six. Condition number six says that no one under twenty-one years of age shall be permitted within areas designated for alcohol beverage consumption and/or storage. And so the applicant is fine with that condition, however, we believe it's a little ambiguous as to what it means, if it could be interpreted as meaning that no minors could be in this main area of the painting studio even when alcohol services were not being conducted. So we were just hoping to clarify that condition or maybe we could slightly modify it in some way to make clear that, you know, when the alcohol service is not being done, are there no alcohol sales, that, you know, the impression isn't that minors can't be in that room. And other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Doesn't appear anyone wishes to speak on this item. I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the commission.
So, Commissioner, or Chairman, through you, you want to be able to have kids in there as long as people aren't drinking at that moment in time? How do we police that?
Right, so we've discussed this with business license. We've submitted a security plan. It addresses all the different contingencies. For example, if there was going to be an under twenty-one class going on at the business, there's an employee that meets everybody at the door and they would be instructed that, you know, there would be no alcohol service. If there was alcohol service in another part of the area, the children or the minors would be instructed to go back to this back room here where there would be no alcohol service.
So if there's a loud drinking artist that may be slammed out front, it's okay if we stick the kids in the back room? I'm just like, we're trying to parse out, parse out a, this is good for a tavern, it's not an eating establishment, it's an art studio. And I know in this, there was something similar came before us a month or so ago. We have this horrendous problem apparently in this community with packaged liquor that it is, it's really about ready to shut everything down. We're going to moratorium on ancillary uses and all this stuff. And now we just want to find more places to sell liquor, so I'm confused what, either you're an art studio or you're a liquor studio. I mean, what is it?
Well, so first of all, it's only beer and wine. Secondly, this is on sale, this is not off sale. So all the problems with the package off sale, that wouldn't be applicable in this case. The other thing too is, like I said, they operate the exact same studio in Henderson. There's been no issues. They have a track record for compliance. It's been very successful. It's at the district. So the same application would apply here. They wouldn't be allowed to drink off premises just for on-premises consumption and it's limited. It would only be at events where there is ages twenty-one and older where they would even have the beer and wine service. So the only part that I was hoping to clarify with, you know, with this condition six is that when there's not going to be alcohol service, the bar is going to be shut down. They're going to have a velvet rope that goes around the bar area, so no children would be allowed in that area. It's just that the language here was a little ambiguous as to what, you know, the circumstances in which it would apply.
So, but I still want to get back to the fact is, if somebody's there all day taking an art class and been drinking, you shut the bar down, you still have a couple drunk people there and you're bringing kids in now. How do you square that up? Just, I'm curious.
Right, well, I mean, certainly they wouldn't. Right. Well, I mean, certainly they wouldn't over-serve somebody. Uh, I, I would be surprised if someone would take several classes and drink all day long at a painting studio. You know, they have times where...
You haven't seen me paint, okay?
[laughing]
Enough wine, you can make the art look good. But, uh, I, this just seems like an, another, call it a bar and don't let kids in. You can do all the, all the art painting you want, and you can do full-on body painting if you want. But, um, I, I don't quite get how you want to parse this out and, um, still make it a, a family-friendly environment. So, but...
Certainly understand your concerns, and just to address those a little bit further, there are similar painting studios already in the city of Las Vegas. It's under a beer and wine room license. So it's just sort of, uh, you know, it's not your tavern or something to that degree.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm not ready to make a motion. I would like to know, you say there's other studios that have alcohol and art. How are they regulated in terms of, uh, minor access to the facility?
Yes. Uh, and so, uh, we've worked extensively with business license on this and other things. Uh, you know, they're being more involved with the security plan. So we've already submitted our security plan to business license. I assume, we don't represent the other painting studio. I just know their license as a beer and wine room, which is the exact same license that we're applying for here. And the security plan lays out exactly how all these things are detailed. And I, I'm happy to provide a copy. I only have one with me, but I can submit them if anybody else wants to read it. And it discusses, you know, when they're having classes with minors, what the operations are like, set to shut down the bar. If not, then minors are not allowed if they're going to be serving. Minors are not allowed in the area, which, you know, is reflected in, in condition six here. I just want to make sure it's tailored to what the applicant is going to be doing. But they have very, a very detailed protocol for, uh, where minors will be allowed and not allowed, and during what times, and what classes they're going to have. And, uh, like I said, they've, they've been operating a studio at the district in Henderson for over a year now and haven't had any problems.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, sir, I've been to this kind of establishment in a, uh, hotel, and it was a woman's fiftieth birthday. And in one corner was the fiftieth birthday going on with the wine and the cheese and the, you know, the cake and the whole French theme, and we painted the Tower of, of whatever it's called. And in the other room over here is a kids' party going on with the cats, and the people are dressed up like kittens and, and dogs, and they're painting cat and, cats and dogs. And over here is a eighteen-and-over party, and they're doing something else. The point is this, it all worked. I mean, I don't know how it worked. It's been in this hotel for about three years now. It's called Wine and Canvas, and, um, I agree completely with Rick about the alcohol with the children, but these things are popping up everywhere, and, um, I've yet to see a problem because, and they're, they're roped off and everything, but they don't shut the bar down while the kids are in there. So you're kind of fibbing a little bit. The, the bars are open, the, the wine is flowing, the kids are just on the other side of the room while the mom's getting hammered painting the piazza. So this is how it works. I don't drink, but I've been there. And I, and I'm telling you, it worked out, so you're going to see my approval. And I'm not a drinker, and I, I believe kids and no drinking and everything, but I got to tell you, this mom's painting, getting hammered, and the kids over here, it was working. So I'm going to support this item.
Thank you, and, uh, I can certainly state on, on behalf of the applicant, that's not, that's not going to be the case. That's not what they're going for.
Well, I'm just telling you, you don't shut down the bar when you got the twenty-one-year-olds in there with the eight-year-olds painting the kitten. It all works. That's how it works. So, we have to be on the square here with your other commissioners.
Commissioner Trailbridge.
Okay.
And so the security plan will be submitted, oh, sorry.
Okay. I would, uh, at this point, make a, a motion to approve, uh, special use permit fifty-eight-nine thirteen with the addition of one, uh, additional element. And that would be that we would have a, a six-month review administrative by the planning commission identifying the problems that have occurred, and if there are problems, we'll address it, uh, in six months. So that's my motion.
Okay. Does the applicant agree to the six-month review?
Six months, great. Uh, I was hoping maybe we could clarify, uh, the, the language and...
We've, we've been through that.
We've been through that, okay.
Unless Commissioner Trailbridge is making a motion with regard to that.
You, you had a document there that, uh, sounded fine to me, but just, uh, if you've got all these provisions and all these monitorings going on, if you stick with them, you're not going to have any problems.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion is to approve item thirty-eight with the additional condition of a six-month review. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, one, one recommendation on that RQR. From issuance, can we add from issuance of business license? Uh, because usually what happens in these cases is they aren't open right away. They'll, they'll take some time to do tenant improvements. They may not even be open in six months. So if we do it from issuance of business license, then we all have six months of business to review.
I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, and I just thought it was understood.
And I'm going to support your motion because I think there might be some opportunities for, uh, uh, Wine and Canvas in a couple rooms in a business I run, so I, I think I'm going to support this.
Motion is to approve item thirty-eight with the six-month review from the date of the issuance of the business license. Please vote.
Rent rooms one oh four and one oh five.
Please post. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Item thirty-nine, SUP five-nine-zero-zero-seven. The applicant is Lee's Liquor, and the owner is Inland Western Las Vegas Montecito LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed seven thousand eighty-four square foot liquor sales, packaged liquor off-sale establishment use at sixty-six ninety North Durango Drive in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is an existing shopping center which provides cross-access and shared parking throughout the entire commercial center. The proposed use will have no immediate impact in the term of providing on-site parking or surrounding land uses. Uh, in Montecito Town Center, there are no minimum special use permit requirements for the liquor sales use. As this request meets code and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the existing shopping center, staff recommends approval of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Uh, my name is Bruce. I, I'm the general contractor for...
I need you to state your full name, please, and your address.
Okay. My full name is Bruce Yu, um, four-four-five East Windmill Lane, Suite Two-A, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Uh, Y-U.
Thank you. And do you have any comments about your application?
Um, I'm just here for, um, if there's any, uh, conditions or any, any issues or on that, uh, special use permit for Mr. Lee. He's, uh, he wants to be expanding, um, those areas. I believe there's, there's no...
Sorry, you're, you're kind of talking quietly. Um, let me ask you this. Are you willing to follow staff's recommendations and conditions on this?
Um, excuse me? I didn't get that.
Yes. Are you willing to follow staff's conditions and recommendations on this application?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and, uh, see if there's any discussion amongst the planning commissioner, uh, planning commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of item thirty-nine, SUP five-nine-zero-zero-seven, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, motion is to approve item thirty-nine. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item thirty-nine is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Item forty, SUP five-nine-zero-one-two. The applicant is No Drama Bail Bonds, and the owner is Plaza Las Americas Holdings LLC. This is for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed one thousand three hundred sixty-three square foot bail bond service at five forty-six Eastern Avenue, Suite One Thirty in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed bail bond use will be located with a shopping center that has ample parking. Proposed use is similar to other office uses located with the same shopping center, and therefore can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with surrounding commercial uses. As such, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Maria Romero, four-four, um, forty-one sixty-four Gray Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-two-one. Um, I'm the owner of No Drama Bail Bonds, and I'm here just in case you guys have any questions.
Thank you. You here to speak?
I'm just here to support.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the, uh, commission?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is in my word, real, I mean, close to my, close to where I live, and, um, you know, it's right around the corner from the court, not the courthouse, the, uh, the jail. Um, and, you know, um, I don't have a problem with it. It's a nice shopping center. Uh, just hope you keep it looking nice and don't paint it green, and you get all your permits for signage and do everything properly, because there's been a lot of abuse up and down Eastern with illegal signage, and I don't want you all to add to the problem. I want you all to help, help, uh, the issue.
Care to make a motion?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, on item forty, SUP five-nine-zero-one-two, move to approve. Uh, follow on staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item forty. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item forty is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item forty is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on to item forty-two, SUP five-nine-zero-three-two. The applicant is Opportune. The owner is Charleston Plaza LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two thousand one hundred ninety-two square foot financial institution, specified use with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential use where two hundred feet is required, and to allow a nine hundred seventy-five foot distance separation from an existing similar use where one thousand feet is required. Out eighteen fourteen East Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. May we please have the staff report?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds that the, the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing surrounding land uses, as evident by the waiver request. Uh, please note that we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Tony Celeste, address eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Opportune LLC. Along with me is Pedro Mora, who is with Opportune LLC, and, um, is here to answer any questions that be, may be relevant to the operation of Opportune. Um, first, I'll just point out the, uh, general vicinity or, or general location of our site. As you can see, it's located off of East Charleston Boulevard, uh, in the shopping center where Bruce Street dead ends into, it's a shopping center where there's an Albertson's located there, CVS. Uh, probably most of us would be familiar with that shopping center, as that is where the Los Tacos Taqueria, uh, restaurant is there that I know many of us frequent. So that's the, uh, the shopping center we're, uh, looking at today. Um, before I get too much into the actual, uh, use permit application before you, I'd like to give you a little bit of, uh, history and reference about Opportune themselves. Opportune is, uh, was founded in two thousand and six. They are an installment lender, an installment lender only, and I'll explain why that's very important in a few minutes. They currently operate a hundred and fifty stores in, uh, California, Texas, Illinois, and just recently opened up their newest branch in Utah. Um, this is a, as I mentioned, a installment lender. Um, what they have identified is a segment of the population that is underserved with the ability to get personal loans. Um, you or I, Mr. Mora, could go to our bank, uh, whether it be Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Chase, whatever it be, walk in, we have a credit history. We would be able to secure a personal loan for whatever we may want to use that loan for, whether it's to fix up our house, buy equipment, or something of that nature. Um, that's exactly what Opportune is, uh, is in the business of doing. They're targeting folks that are underserved in the community who do not have the ability to have, uh, access to the banking institutions, because they have not had the ability to, uh, build credit for whatever reasons, some of them being immigrants. What Opportune does is they, uh, do their own background check on each applicant. Um, they provide, uh, a, the, the background checks they do are, they, uh, take W twos or paycheck stubs and, uh, verify income, verify, uh, sources of that income, and then, based on that, give small loans, generally two to five thousand dollars unsecured loan, like we would have gotten at the, uh, the bank. Um, that loan is then paid over, uh, a period of time, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six months, or whatever, uh, is negotiated, or whatever Opportune feels is, uh, would be best to fit that person and ensure the ability to pay them back. Of course, they charge an interest rate, just like a banking institution would. The difference between us and a bank is that they're not a deposit. They don't have any, uh, ability to, there, there's no, uh, uh, safe savings account or checking account that they have. They're strictly just an installment lender, as I mentioned. And why that's very important is that the special use permit that we're under is a specified, is a, uh, institution specified. And specified, uh, allows many other uses, such as payday loans, auto title loans, uh, other postdated check cashing type services, which I, I want to emphasize is not what my client does. That is not part of their business model. And it's very important because, as you can see, um, in the area, the site, the, the larger ring is the thousand-foot separation requirement to a similar use. That similar use, I believe, is a payday loan type. We are just only twenty-five feet short, measuring from property line to property line. We're nine hundred seventy-five feet, or a thousand, is required. And, uh, if you were actually measured from building to building, uh, it would be over a thousand feet. And if you measured from door to front door, it'd be well over a thousand feet as well. Um, the second component is that I want to draw your attention to is the, um, the zoning map here. As you can see, uh, our site's Zone C one, and in fact, just to the south of us is Zone C one. Um, I, in the staff report, it mentions that, um, we're within, uh, zero feet of a, uh, zoned, um, residential property. And as you can see, I'll put the aerial back up. The, the smaller circle references the, uh, uh, two-hundred-foot separation requirement to residential. Um, I think it's basically just a, a, a misstatement, um, that it should be zoned or a use that is residential. In this case, um, what you can see directly to the south of us is, while it's an, operating as an apartment, it's actually, the underlying zoning is C one. Um, we are adjacent to it, and we are requesting that zero-foot separation requirement. However, in order to access our site to the apartment complex, you would have to go out of the center onto Charleston, turn right, down Birmingham, and then down, or Birmingham, and then into the shopping center. So, that route would be well over two hundred feet. We have a block wall between us and, um, the shopping center. We're located in a shopping center that is commercial in nature, as I mentioned, the various other uses in there. Uh, so with that, uh, background and, um, explanation, I, I respectfully request your approval, and we do agree with all of the approved conditions.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll open this for public comment, if anyone wishes to be heard. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission. Commissioner Truestow?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do understand the difference. Uh, this, this being an installment loan is just significantly different than, uh, payday loans. The other things that we get bundled into the financial, uh, institution specified. Uh, up until probably ten, eleven years ago, we used to have a lot of these type of lenders in this marketplace. They all got kind of merged up into other things. Uh, many of them picked up by regular banks because they, they were a, a better lending source for small businesses, young families, and gave them an opportunity. So, I, I think it's, I don't see this fitting in that predatory lending cycle that we, we typically have talked about over the years. And, um, I think, uh, the way this is just defined by, uh, the applicant, it is not, uh, over the fence to get some, to a residential a- address. So, if there are no objections, I would move for, to follow staffs as of approved conditions for approval.
Motion is to approve item forty-two. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item forty-two carries.
Mr. Chairman, uh, item forty-two is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within... office within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I may just have one minute to first, I want to personally welcome back Commissioner Trowbridge to the planning commission. Great to see you and look forward to working with you in the future. And to Commissioners Goins and Truesdale, it's been a complete honor to practice before you the last eight or so years. I appreciate all, all of the wisdom, the advice that you have given to me and to my clients, and I wish, wish you guys the best of luck in your future endeavors, and I'm sure I will see you guys around. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item forty-three, SUP 59044. The applicant owner is TLVCR LLC. For possible action on our request for a special use permit for a proposed 13,810-square-foot packaged liquor off-sale establishment use at 18 Fremont Street in Ward Five. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. The floor plan indicates there is a total gross floor area of 13,810 square feet. However, the floor plans indicate that 1,832 square feet are dedicated to a lower level for storage. And, and staff finds that that doesn't meet the intent of the ordinance as it was written and brought the minimum square footage of the main floor down to 11,978 square feet or 22 square feet short of the 12,000, 12,000 square feet provided within the ordinance. We did, the applicant did reach out to staff and discuss that and indicated that they might be amenable to finding those 22 square feet in order to meet the, the intent of the ordinance to provide that 12,000 square feet of pharmacy. But as such, currently, staff is recommending denial of this item.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. With me is Laura Dreya. First, some brief background. About a year ago, I think it was May 21st, the city council, after a contentious meeting discussing their concerns about packaged liquor establishments on Fremont Street, decided to ban retail sale of packaged liquor with one exception. And that exception, it was to allow grocery stores and drugstores with a minimum of 12,000 internal gross square feet, is the way I think it read, to have accessory packaged liquor. So therefore, the battle of packaged liquor on Fremont Street, at least as to the drugstore issue, is really, you know, over history. The council entered its decision. With regard to this application, as I understand it, and I think it was, my staff just, you know, stated correctly, we do have 11,978 square feet on the first floor. And the city council didn't say that the 12,000 square feet had to be on one floor. They just said they're happy to, you know, we just want a total of 12,000, but we want to work well with staff. The applicant has asked me to say that we found the 22 feet. Okay, we found the 22 feet. We don't want to argue about 22 feet. And therefore, we would appreciate your approval. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Laura, and she'll tell you about some of the safeguards that are in place regarding packaged liquor at this location.
Laura Dreya, 520 South Fourth Street. Following the May 21st meeting that Jay was describing, there were two additional meetings in June and July dealing with Title VI and alcohol sales on Fremont. The additional safeguards that were adopted were that no single serving sales, no single serving products were to be sold, no malt beverages in 32-ounce containers or greater, no miniatures defined as less than 375 millimeters of packaged liquor, no malt beverages, 11% alcohol by volume or greater. The prices of beverages shall not be visible from Fremont Street or any other right-of-way. Inventory cannot be, alcoholic inventory cannot be displayed within 10 feet of the entrance or exit. Floor space is limited to 10% of the retail floor area that's dedicated to alcohol, and employees must pass in purchases with a receipt. That's all Jay and I have to say for now. We're happy to answer any questions.
I just want to make it clear, though, if we're fortunate enough to get approval, we will be happy to do it with the understanding that we must have 12,000 square feet as staff has asked on the first floor.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Laura, what did you say about the receipts at the end? I missed it.
That employees must pass in purchases with the receipt, staple or affix them, use the stamp to stick it together.
Okay, I'll open this for public comments. Anyone wish to be heard? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Ryan Arnold, 2620 Regatta Drive. Here tonight representing Fremont Street Experience. You've all seen me here before. You're in luck. It's just me tonight. You know, it, Mr. Brown's correct. At the May 21st meeting, this was debated. We didn't agree with it then. We're back here to put on the record that we don't agree with it tonight. I think, I just, I want to reiterate a few things. You know, this two-year journey that we've been taking here to try and gain some sort of control of the packaged liquor situation under the canopy has had some really positive movement. We, the recent regulations that they mentioned earlier, they've had a huge impact. You know, the bag, the stapling of the receipt, it's had a big impact. In fact, all of our properties have added additional staff to ensure that their patrons aren't leaving with glass. So we're making big strides. We've gone as far as, we've got one member that recently donated nearly $100,000 to Metro to install additional cameras under the canopy. We're doing things. We're making big efforts to try and gain control down here. In fact, we are in a three or four-hour meeting today dealing with the busker issue. So we're very active trying to figure out ways to manage this. The other issue here is that if you look at the existing packaged liquor, we have, this is somewhat of a guesstimate based on a partial details from staff, but we have somewhere around three to maybe 500 total square feet of packaged liquor right now. This application is coming in at 1,000 square feet. That's a small house filled to the prim of alcohol. That's a concern. We're looking, you know, we've gone through this two-year journey with all of you, majority of you, and city council acknowledging that we have an issue down there with packaged liquor. They've gone as far as, you've heard from Karen Duddleston with her facts and figures of all the issues this has created. You've heard some, from some of our national experts we brought in that have made it very clear that across the nation, in fact, the world and major destinations, that packaged liquor is attributed to larger issues, larger social problems than a licensed bar. That's, again, we're looking at more than doubling the amount. So that's a concern to us. The last thing I'll leave you with here is that we have a pharmacy under the canopy right now. They've been there for years. They're one of our tenants. They do very well. But they've come back to us over and over saying, hey, we want a liquor license. In their lease agreement, it states there that they cannot have a liquor license. We don't want that to occur. They keep coming back to us, we keep saying no. We can make a lot more money, they can make a lot more money. But that's contrary to what we've been trying to achieve here. So I just want to share that with you, that we're sticking by what we have always shared with you, that this is an issue that we're trying to control. I, there's not, I mean, I could go on and on, but you get the point. So we just want to make sure that you heard from us again, and we appreciate you taking. Let me present to you. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Brown, I'm going to give you a chance to reply.
Just very briefly. First of all, the law says, that was passed by the city council, it can be up to 10%. I did not mean to represent that we'll use that 10%, okay? That's just what the law says we can do up to. When, when we finalize our transaction with the major pharmacy, we'll see what we do. It'll be just like normal pharmacies of that ilk do throughout the community. Also, it's not just packaged liquor. I mean, beer and wine can be, certainly is liquor, but it's not all packaged liquor. There's going to be wine, beer, et cetera. So with that, it's a land use, and we appreciate your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. I will close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission. Commissioner Quin.
Yeah, I have a few questions, Mr. Brown. So now, this, this is in, at the bottom level of the Lady Luck Hotels at?
Las Vegas Club.
Las Vegas Club. So in other words, if somebody's staying in the Lady Luck Hotel and they choose not to have room service, and they choose not to sit at a bar and drink, maybe because of money or whatever, they just want to go up to their room, so they could go walk down into this lobby, they can buy a six-pack of beer, not a single beer, they can buy a bottle of wine or whatever, and then they can go back up their room, to their room, eliminating the fact that they're going to go down the street, drive somewhere to do the exact same thing to bring it back up to their room. In other words, it eliminates that step of them leaving the property, coming back, possibly drinking while they're en route or whatever, and being able to drink in their room at a reasonable cost. Is that fair to say?
Very fair to say.
Okay. And so my thought process is this, is like, it's, to me, I've never seen this application before inside of a hotel. I don't believe so since I've been up here. And I think that, I know that when you go to a hotel and, and, you know, you're going to order a couple drinks in your room, and they're 1650 or 1550 or whatever, a lot of people can't do that. And so I would rather see somebody go downstairs, pick up a six-pack, go back up to their room, and enjoy their evening without driving around looking for booze that's cheaper, 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 when this is going to be available to them at their dispense on the property of where they're staying. So in my opinion, this is going to eliminate some type of problems of people fleeing to buy booze and bringing it in. That's just my opinion, and therefore, I'm going to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins.
Just real quick, I'll be brief. I'm going to hold a form that I've done in the past for a number of years where I just don't believe in alcohol being sold out of a drugstore. And so with that, I, I won't be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, I see both sides of the story. I see Fremont East, and I, I see what y'all are trying to do. However, our city council passed ordinance this past year, which allows you to do exactly what you're doing. It's not a 40-year-old ordinance, and the ordinance isn't going to make everybody happy, but it's not an ordinance that was passed 20 years ago. It was passed here recently. It always comes down to, well, they're going to be selling the high-octane, you know, or whatever they call it, the drinks. And it sounds like you put 20 different safeguards in place to make sure you're not selling the minis, you're not selling the high-octane, you're not doing all this other stuff and not selling the singles. I'll repeat and the same thing, because I'm sure everybody from Fremont Street Experience is going to call me tomorrow and tell me that I made the wrong decision. But, you know, when it come to us last time, a couple of years ago, and then the moratorium got put on, I didn't see an issue with it. And then there's so many people that come out and protested that I had to say, you know, sit back and listen, reevaluate. And I said, you know what? There's so many people in opposition, I couldn't vote for this at that particular time. But I also talked to the Fremont Street Experience people, and I said, why is it the drugstore? Why is it the, the liquor store? When I can get a 64-ounce, six-pack of beer and a football, and a yard-long, three-foot-long margarita? So it's not just, I mean, it needs to be an effort between Fremont Street Experience managing their own operators in addition to becoming good partners with the drugstore and the 500 square feet of off-site liquor. So everybody needs to do their part. And Fremont Street Experience said, sure, we'll look into that, and we need to clean up our act, and we need, you know, manage our alcohol better as well. Because when you, I had one of those about eight years ago. I couldn't finish it, and I was so intoxicated, and I bought it right underneath the canopy. So, you know, it, we need to think about all these things, and that's about all my comments, but you'll see my support.
Thank you.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, we, this, this has been a long and contentious issue, and I know Fremont Street Experience is endeavoring to represent the street in a, to, to always improve things. But in this scenario with what the ordinance, which was adopted recently, and even the comments made by Ms. Duddleston when she was here telling us about what they're looking at in the packaged liquor, it was always very clear that this drugstore size and a national drugstore was, was the way to approach this, or to, it kind of met the threshold that, that the council would get behind. I mean, from, you know, a rather conservative person like Bob Beers, who really said this was the greatest thing, to have a drugstore, you know, because they run better operations than the private, small private businesses. And, you know, I remember when the motions were made, I actually was watching the city council that day. I don't know what I had, nothing else to do or something. But Councilman Barlow was, was very clear, and several of the, the people speaking were clear that this was an acceptable threshold. So I think the applicants brought us exactly what the city said was appropriate. And to me, that's the way we should look at land use entitlements. If we set the rules and an applicant meets those rules, I think we tell ourselves we're obligated to support them unless we have some personal bias that is, that we just don't want to do. So I'm going to support this item because I think in any lease space I've ever dealt with, adjusting the wall to find 22 feet is never going to be a problem. And I was in there the, two days ago, and, or, I'm sorry, Friday, and there wasn't a lot of activity in this part of that casino, so I think this is a good help. But, so I will support it. But on a, one, one side note to Mr. Arnold and the Fremont Street Experience, I brought two retailers downtown last week. National Concerns, incredibly well-funded companies that wanted to come downtown, wanted to invest in a retail establishment. We were there for about 30 minutes after the topless busker with the pasties on, the most ugly girl I've ever seen. And the two men, one about 95 and another one about 60 maybe, wearing their mankinis. I got to tell you, these clients said we will not invest in downtown Las Vegas. They packed up, they left. This, this drugstore is not the problem that's affecting the success of downtown and getting other entertainment and retail. It's just people policing what we have down there. And I know I hear about freedom of speech and all these things, but I've been to a lot of great cities, and the cities have found their way, found a way to take these kind of areas and, and come with ordinances at work. So I would, I would leave it in the hands of our most capable city attorneys and those attorneys with Fremont Street Experience to work something out that keeps the courts in San Francisco off our backs so we can keep the smut off our streets, so.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Well, I think we've heard the, the discussion. I'm ready for a motion.
I do have a few comments. I'm going to join Commissioner Goins. I can support this. I, I think an application that proposes to potentially double the amount of retail space for packaged liquor has a negative impact. And just a week ago, I was speaking with a client. She was telling me, she and her friends, an elderly client, they love to go down to Fremont Street and walk and listen to the bands. But she shared with me that, you know, there are these growing problems, and I think it is time to get control. We've got a long way to go. I, I agree with the vice chair that Fremont Street Experience needs to get control of its operators and just clean it up. You know, we, we have, locals like to go down to Fremont Street still. I think there's enough liquor there, and I have, I have voted in the past against any additional, additional packaged liquor off-sales, so you won't see my support.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Then if there are no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to follow staff's as of approved conditions for approval with the added condition that the- with the added condition that the applicant must submit a revised plan showing the additional 22 square feet, meeting that requirement, pardon issuance of any permits.
Okay. Motion is to approve item 43. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may make one brief comment to follow my colleague, Tony Celeste, who's left, to Commissioner Truesdale and to Commissioner Goins. Thanks for your service, and thanks for the memories. And to Commissioner Trowbridge, welcome home. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, item 43 is final action, let's appeal to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay. Moving on to related items 45 and 46. Item 45 is VAC 59208, the applicant owner is Affordable Housing for Everyone Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate two five-foot-wide public drainage easements located at 1961 through 1973 Simmons Street in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 46 is SDR 58932, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for two proposed four-unit multifamily residential developments, with a waiver to allow a residential adjacency setback of six feet, where a minimum of 67.5 feet is required, and waivers to allow zero-foot-wide landscape buffers along a portion of the north and south property lines where six feet is required, and a nine-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to the right-of-way where 10 feet is required in Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff worked extensively with the applicant to revise the original plan as submitted, however, staff was unable to submit, or to recommend approval, as there are still concerns about the location of the trash enclosures, and we are recommending denial of the site plan review, however, we do recommend approval of the vacation to, of the easements for drainage.
Okay, thank you. As the applicant here, we may have outlasted the applicant on these items tonight. I'll open this for public comment, does anyone wish to be heard for or against these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. What would the commission like to do with this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold these items until next meeting. Yep.
Okay. So inasmuch as there are conditions that the applicant needs to agree to, the motion is to obey items 45 and 46 until the July 14 Planning Commission meeting.
That would be my motion.
Please vote. And post? Motion to approve, or motion to obey items 45 and 46 carries. That is obeyed until the next Planning Commission meeting on July 14. Moving on to director's business, item 47, TXT 58648, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Chapter 19.16.180 related to home occupation permits and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, recently, the Planning Department added another division, which is code enforcement. As part of, code enforcement coming to be part of us, we're working closely together to help revise code to facilitate enforcement. This is one of those items that is coming forward to help enforcement of home occupation permits, and to better clarify those items. The items that specifically were resolving a conflict regarding the repair of motor vehicles, we weren't, the code wasn't clear whether or not if you had a mobile repair service, if you could operate your office out of your home and go repair elsewhere, this clarifies that. In addition to, it also expressly indicates that no outside storage is permitted, internet sales are permitted with, as a home occupation permit, our code's a little old, there were no such things as internet sales when it was written a long time ago. It also clarifies the food preparation prohibition, except in conjunction with the cottage food operation, which was two years ago through NRS to allow the cottage food industry. Storage of vehicles for sale by auto dealers are not allowed as part of a home occupation permit, and also clarifies that you can use your accessory structure for your home occupation, but you have to do it inside a closed structure, not on the outside. And vehicles that are intended solely for commercial use need to be parked elsewhere, this clarifies. Ice cream trucks, ice cream trucks are not allowed to be stored at your home, if you have an ice cream, you need to reserve a yard for that, and that clarifies that, for others' intended use. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment, does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion among the planning commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval is presented.
Motion is to approve item 47, please vote. Motion to approve item 47 carries. Item 48, TXT 59132, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, this is for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Chapter 19.12 related to permit uses to streamline zoning requirements and development standards for various land uses, and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, over the last few years, the Planning Department has been working, along with Planning Commission and City Council, to revise our ordinances, to make processes quicker and faster for applicants, so they can get their businesses going. And this is the continuation of that, our first project was to reduce the number of land uses we had, we went from 147 down to 113, and this is a continuation of this. What this will do is provide for a more user-friendly zoning code, it significantly reduces the time needed for approvals of certain uses that currently require approval of a special use permit, and it cleans up regulations from permitted uses that previously had minimum conditions of approval. The uses that are being proposed by this text amendment include automobile rental, assisted living apartments, beer/wine cooler on-sale establishments. An example on the beer/wine cooler establishments, over the last two years, there were 26 items applied for, for beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment, and they were all approved. There were no denials. Those that had no waivers, so they weren't too close to a protected use, not within 400 feet of a church or school. Building maintenance and service and sales is another use category. It's, currently requires a special use permit in C1. Any of those items that have come forward over the last couple of years have been approved. This would make it a conditional use, so they're not allowed to do outside storage, except as limited by that use, but they can move forward. Convalescent care facility, nursing homes are, would be a conditional use in zoning districts. Restaurant with service bar also, once again, in conjunction with food service for alcohol, senior citizen apartments, social service providers, and thrift shops. When no waivers accompany these items, 100% of all these special use permits have been approved over the last few years. The special use permits take a minimum of 79 days for final approval at Planning Commission, and a minimum of 90 days if they have to go to City Council. By changing this to a conditional use, these uses can be reviewed as little as one day over the counter, in order to ensure they meet the minimum conditional use requirements. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Let me open this for public comment. Seeing none, close the public comment. We can discuss this as a Commissioner Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, question for staff. Mr. Rankin, on, like the automobile rental, I don't understand some of this, like, the conditional use regulations, almost everything was struck through, and the minimum special use permit requirements, almost everything was struck through, so, why did we strike, like, no use or discarded, automotive parts or equipment shall be located or stored in an open area outside of an enclosed building, all lighting shall be screened or otherwise designed, not to shine directly on adjacent parcel land? There's like 10 of them. Why would we strike those?
And once again, we struck those because they're covered in other sections of the code. Actually, that's covered in our development section of our code in 19.08, which has restrictions for C1, where you can't do outdoor storage. So, it was a redundant condition, which made our code more complicated, harder for people to use. It was a lot of language that wasn't needed, and it was already contained somewhere else, including the lighting condition, that's already part of our code. So these were conditions upon conditions upon conditions. And this will clarify and clean those up.
And, the Planning Department's going to check all those little conditions whenever it comes in for a building permit?
Actually, we do. When they come in for a business licensing and for the permit, we check them both times to ensure that they're meeting those conditions. And if they fall out of those conditions, then code enforcement is dispatched to the location to inspect, and attempt to get correction in conformance and compliance.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Would anyone care to make a motion on item 48?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of item 48.
Motion is to approve item 48, please vote. Motion carries. Moving on to item 49, TXT 59133, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Title 19 to revise the applicability and procedures related to review of site development plans and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of reducing those entitlement times. So any size project that has waivers or variances would then require the major review or public hearing before this board here. If you don't have any waivers and no variances, you would go through the minor review administrative process. These changes allow new construction of any size development to be administratively reviewed if all Title 19 requirements are satisfied. This fulfills a departmental goal we have for efficiency and customer service, clarifies when a project qualifies as a major or minor review, there was some confusion on those, removes unnecessary thresholds for amended projects, and it also will help encourage code-compliant development. As part of that is, if you meet all of code, you get, you don't have to come through an up to 98-day review process. We are currently averaging 10 days for all minor reviews. Sometimes they're quicker than that, they can be as fast as over-the-counter at times, and this would help facilitate it. And what we found is, over the last two years, there were 138 site plan reviews, without waivers or variances, 137 were approved, and one was withdrawn. So when we don't have waivers or variances, those site plans get approved. And rather than have the developer go through a, up to 98 days, or 78 days to come to the Planning Commission, they can go through a quicker review process in order to get their building permits, start their project, and complete a building, and move forward. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for approval of text amendment 59133, following all staff's recommendations.
Motion is to approve item 49, please vote. Please post? Motion carries. Moving on to item 50, DIR 59318, the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request for the appointment of new members to the Downtown Design Review Committee. Staff has no recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, this item was placed on here as kind of a placeholder, so we weren't sure when we would have new appointments. It might be something you might want to hold in advance, as Commissioner Truesdale is, and I'll try and make it shorter so he doesn't have to spend until the next day with us, is on the DDRC, and he would be leaving us, and then there would be an open seat. But possibly, you might want to hold this item in advance, so that the new members can be afforded either the opportunity to say they would love to serve on the DDRC, as it's an interesting group, or maybe they're not interested. Just a thought, at this point.
Okay. It's a good thought. Any motions with regard to that idea to obey?
Well, I'm interested in serving on it.
Commissioner Quinn is interested in serving on the DDRC.
Well, I'll move, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Quinn to the DDRC, if she'd like to serve on that board.
I'd like to. Give it a shot.
Okay. Motion is for the appointment of Commissioner Quinn to the DDRC.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Voice voter?
No, we can make that official. Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you.
Okay. Citizens' participation, item 51. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject matter may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of any time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Truesdale?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, and more along recognizing people that have been integral in helping us do our job over the years, since I began serving on the Planning Commission back in January of 2000. The clerks that are here every night, and no matter how long we want to talk, they're stuck staying, from Gabrielle Brenner, Angela Crowley, Arlene Coleman, Jackie Miller, and Deborah Outland, to our staff who is invaluable, like Doug Rankin, Peter Lowenstein, our new planning director, Tom Perrigo, and Karen Duddleston. And former directors of planning that I found were incredible to work with, and became great friends with, Flynn Fag, Margot Wheeler, and Bob Ginzler. Now, I know there were a couple others, like Chow and this other girl that was before that, I can't remember their names, so, it was good. And our city attorneys who likewise, from the grand guy himself, Brad Jirbyk, to Brian Scott and Jim Lewis, that have all been up here with us, and public works, like from Bart Anderson and Lucian, who would much rather be home with his family, I can tell. And some of the planning commissioners that I've served with in the past, like Michael Buckley, Craig Galati, Steve Quinn, Todd Nygro, Steve Evans, David Steinman, and our own Glenn Trowbridge, making a comeback appearance, you know, who knew? And the current commissioners that have been a very cohesive group. Over the years, the chemistry on planning changes, and you, sometimes you have a perfect group here, and everything's going smooth, and then you get a, something that's just off the wall, or the reservation. But, many thanks to Gus Flengus, Trinity Schlotman, Todd Moody, who I've sat next to quite a bit of time over the years, and Vicki Quinn, who continues to amaze me how hard she wants to work, and she does better and better and better and better.
Thanks.
Thank you. And with my deepest regrets in seeing his illness take over, Dick Bonar, who years ago I worked with, when he was still with the Howard Hughes Corporation, and developing the Meadows School site, and that's a long time, and a long relationship, and to see him suffer has just been crazy. And last but not least, Byron Goins, who has served almost as long as I have on the Planning Commission. [laughter] almost as long as I have on the Planning Commission. He's a person committed to what he thinks is the best for the city, and he is committed to that. He really does fight and argue and do what he needs to do to get his point across. We have not always agreed over the years, but one thing I can, I am sure that we share is a mutual respect for each other, because I do believe his heart is the best it can be on trying to do the right things for the residents and the city. And, you know, obviously, I should thank the people that brought me here, Mayor Oscar B. Goodman and Mayor Carolyn G. Goodman, who both thought I was going to do a good job for them, so I think I at least gave it my best effort. And I want to thank my wife, Trish, who lets me know how many anniversaries I've missed sitting up here on planning, and actually been here on Planning Commission nights when I'm going, this is not going well. But, and, you know, Tom is the best guy when you want to talk about green things. He understands green things. His math is not so good on the back of his envelope, because in the fifteen years I've served on the Planning Commission, I've attended at least three hundred meetings, with prep time and average meeting times from long to short, averaged about seven hours a meeting, which totals out about twenty-one hundred hours, and voted on over eighteen thousand agenda items. Byron and I both were here, involved in the longest Planning Commission meeting, where we actually started early at 5:00 PM, and we were still here at 4:30 when this thing ended. And it was not pretty when people, you know, those last couple items were not getting the review they needed. I can tell you that. But I can honestly tell you, serving on the Planning Commission has been one of the most rewarding things I've done, and, you know, I think I've had a great career doing this, and I'm actually really good about the change and how things go, and I'll find some other things to do with those seven hours a week, and, but, there's always been two things that kind of make me want to do things the way I do them. One, something my father taught me was to think positive and make things happen, and another is like Elizabeth Taylor once told me, there is no deodorant like success. So I have enjoyed this, and I enjoyed all the time spent with everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's a tough one to follow. I'll try to see what I can do. Likewise, I'd like to thank everybody. It's been a, it's been a heck of a ride, and it's been nothing but fun, even through the good times and the bad times, and when you're a person like me who always thinks that when a negative comes, that that just means a bigger positive on the other side. So I don't look as negatives as something. I've always been taught not to hate, and so no matter what the argument is, no matter what the debate is, whether it's me and Rick or somebody else, there's no hate. It's just a love of God, thy country, and thy fellow man. So with that, I'll go through my little speech, which is, which is written from the heart, and so I'll just start with, who would have ever thought that in nineteen ninety-two, when I took the dais at my first Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting in the year two, my first Board of Adjustment Meeting, and in the year two thousand, when I took the dais at my first Planning Commission Meeting, that twenty-three years of public service later, I would still be around? Wow. Now, that is what I call true staying power. That is also what I call true love of my community. You see, it all began at the age of twelve years old in nineteen seventy-three, when my father, Theron Goines, who was here tonight, was elected to the North Las Vegas City Council. As a kid, I remember it as if it was yesterday, walking door to door, asking people to vote for my father. You see, asking for a vote is not an easy thing to do. Earning the people's respect is even harder. Those lessons learned while walking door to door, some of which were of respect for thy neighbor, respect for my community, change comes over time, and anger solves no problems. I still carry each and, carry that thought each and every day. One of my favorite quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King that keeps me focused every day and over the years is simply this, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the time of challenge and controversy." You see, I served twenty-three years as a public servant. It was not always easy, but I persevered and didn't stray from the very reason I was appointed, and that was to serve the city, the people of the city of Las Vegas, and not the special interests. I'd like to say a sincere thank you to a few folks that I have had the pleasure of knowing along the way. Number one, it'll be the citizens of Las Vegas. That's what I was put on the zoning board and on the Planning Commission to serve, and I think I've served that to the best of my ability. Kind of goes back to the lessons that I teach my son as we ventured together through Boy Scouts, me being a leader and him being a wee blow, is I did my best. I did my best every time. I did my best every day that I served in this position. I want to thank the city clerks for your diligence and making sure the public record is accurate, as said. I'd like to thank the city marshals, who always never really get much thank you, but I want to thank you for keeping the public and us safe during our public meetings. I can remember one time when I was over by Jimmy Gay Park, looking at an item coming to a planning meeting, and my truck broke down. I was close to my mother's house, and I actually had to call her, and she came and got me and drove me to the Planning Commission meeting, and went back and sat with my truck, and one of the marshals happened to be patrolling and saw it and recognized my truck and my mom, and he sat there with my mom until the tow truck came. And when he came back to City Hall, he let me do that, and I've never ever forgotten that. So I'd like to thank the marshals for that level of protection, even going outside your scope. I'd like to thank the city's Attorney's Office for keeping me on the right side of the law that governs the city and the interpretation of the city code. I'd also like to thank Public Works for all the hard work that you guys have done as well. And, you know, you have to thank the Planning Department, always responding in a timely manner and making sure that my planning package and backup documentation was always in order. I also want to thank my fellow Planning Commissioners, past and present. There are those that stick out to me, and from the zoning board, it was Roberta Boyers. Roberta Boyers taught me to visit every item while on the BZA board, and it carried right over to the Planning Commission, and it's been very, very important. I'd also like to thank Ms. Marilyn Moran. Ms. Moran was like a mom to me on the Planning Commission. She always displayed great composure, and she was never rattled doing heated debates. And I try to do that sometimes, but I tend to stray just a little bit. But I'd also like to thank one of my favorite Commissioners, and that is Commissioner Stephen Quinn, Commissioner Quinn's husband, because he coined that famous phrase that we all use, that there is nothing more permanent than a temporary building. I also want to thank the mayor and the City Council, past and present. Number one, City Councilman Frank Hawkins, who appointed me to the Board of Zoning Adjustment in nineteen ninety-two. That was a compelling appointment, because at that time, Frank Hawkins, and still is known around Las Vegas as a Super Bowl champ of the Raiders. And when he called me and told me he wanted to appoint me, I kind of took that as, man, you're getting appointed by a Super Bowl champ. Can't let him down. I think twenty-three years later, I think I carried the ball. I think I carried it. I think I made it across a few goal lines, a few fourth-and-ones. I think I tuck it, ran, and scored. I'd also like to thank Michael McDonald, County Commissioner Lawrence Weekly, and Ricky Barlow. Those were the councilmen in succession that appointed me and kept me on that great run. And so with that, I didn't know I had over seven thousand hours of community service. I don't know how many meetings I had, but I can tell you what, I truly enjoyed it. My daughter, who was here tonight, is twenty-two. I've served twenty-three years, so she's been born into this and has weathered the storm as well. I'm going out happy. I'm going out happy. I'm not sad. If I do have emotions, there are tears of joy, but I don't think my public service is over yet, because one thing I always have champion is, I don't let people determine my destiny. I do that. No matter what's said about me in the paper, you've heard it recently with this rendition from a reporter that says, you know, they use these descriptive words in the newspaper, "Commissioner is ousted", you know, and those words kind of piss my son off when we're sitting at the table and go, Dad, what do you mean when they're ousted? And it's kind of difficult when you have young kids, and they have to hear this about you in the paper, and then they go to school, and they have to endure it, and you have to explain to them that, you know, adults can be pretty mean sometimes, you know? We teach our kids to be respectful and grow up, but at what point do we turn them? And I always try to keep my kids on the straight and narrow. I don't try to turn them towards anything. But I do want to mention this, which is funny to me, is I've read these articles the last couple of days, and you read these bodies of work by reporters who write as though they have intimately sat down with you, and this last one, I had to talk to the gentleman when he called me, and I said, "Look, let me explain something to you. How long you been in town?" And he said, "I've been here two years." And I said, "Well, where are you from?" And he said, "I'm from," and I won't say it, "he's up, up north." And so I said, "Well, how long you been with the paper?" "Well, I've been here for two years." And I said, "You know what's funny? I've never met you, and I can tell you right here on the record, if you walked in now, I wouldn't know him." But how the heck can you write an article as though you know me intimately like that, and you don't? And so I want the record to reflect what I leave here tonight. I'm not, wasn't put off this Planning Commission. I wasn't ousted off this Planning Commission because of a vote on a text amendment about a doggone stadium. If you pull out the ordinance and read it, which is put into law, I've served my time. I've served my time, and that's why I'm going out here tonight. I'm not going out because some politician didn't like the way I voted. The reporter tried to say, "Well, what do you think about your councilman?" And I like my councilman. And when I look in the neighborhood I serve, people look like me. And with all of the racial relations going on across the nation with black folks and white folks, I'll be doggone if I'm going to start a pissing contest with my councilman, and with, even with the successor that's coming here succeeding me, Cedric Creer. Y'all must need to know, we grew up in those neighborhoods together. Ricky Barlow, Cedric Creer, I used to babysit Cedric Creer when he was a baby, because my mother, I mean, my father, his father and his mother went to college together. So I've known him since a kid. I've known Ricky Barlow as a kid. And so there's no way that we're going to dispute each other about making our community a better place to live, because if kids, as kids, we were raised to make the neighborhood better. And I know Ricky Barlow's mom, who's passed now, the same thing with him. And I know Dr. Creer and Mrs. Creer, Cedric's mother and father, who have passed now. Those are the same things and the values that they passed on to us as kids, and it's now coming to fruition. So you'll never see me argue with them in the public. I don't care what you see, what's written in the paper. It's not, it's not fact, and it's just written for sensationalism. So I'm going to just keep it real on my way out of here. I love my community. I love everybody I work with. And, hell, I don't think I'm done yet. I think God's got other plans for me. And with that, I'm not going to say good night. I'm going to say I'll see y'all again. Thank you.
Godspeed to both of you, and our thoughts and prayers are with Commissioner Bonar.
And just, I'll keep my comments really short, but I think I was thirteen when Byron Goines was appointed to the zoning board, and I was nineteen or twenty when, you know, Rick was appointed. Anyways, and I remember, I finally grew up, and I was about twenty, twenty-four whenever I moved out here, and I remember both of these guys being on the board, and, you know, modifying my site plans and telling me how to build the communities better that we're building, and I probably appeared in front of y'all six or eight times and learned a whole lot from y'all then. But even more so, once I finally grew up and got a little older and got appointed to this board, I learned a heck of a lot from all the Planning Commissioners and the planning staff, and Lucian and Bart, and just the whole city in general, but just the wisdom that y'all taught me, and even Glenn Trowbridge. Really glad to have them back. And so those are my comments. Wish y'all well, and thanks for everything y'all have done for us.
We may come back as Todd Farlow and Tom McGowan from meeting to meeting.
That'd be great.
We'll come in as a pair.
With that, meeting is adjourned.